Welcome everybody out to our June 12th, 2018 session of Lehigh City Council. This are actually our work session here. We'll start here and then continue on to our regular agenda at 7:00 PM. That being said, I would like to have some opening comments. Johnny, would you mind?
Our dear heavenly Father, we humbly bow our heads before thee this day to thank thee for all of our many blessings. We thank thee for the opportunity that we have to be here and to serve in this great community and to share our ideas and make decisions that will benefit our city. We ask that thou would bless us today that we will be able to be open to ideas, be able to communicate and share those ideas with each other and make decisions. Heavenly Father, we ask that thou would bless all of those who serve and work here in our city that they will be watched after and protected. We ask that thou would bless those who are serving our country, that they will be protected, watched and led as well. Heavenly Father, again, we thank thee for all of our many blessings and the opportunities that we have to serve with these things we pray for, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Revel. First item on our agenda is a presentation on the refuse derived fuel plant. Do we have?
I just got a text. They got in an accident.
Really?
They're okay, but they're gonna be a little bit late. So if we'd like to move to the next item.
Let's move to item 2.2. Item 2.2 is an item at the request of Councilor Condy to be put on the agenda. So while I think I had an opportunity to read through this, so Chris, do you want to address this issue?
Yes, I will do that. First of all, I want to welcome Mark Christiansen. He's in the back. He's the city manager for Saratoga Springs. And I believe Jeremy Lepin, who's the public works director, is that correct, from Saratoga? I know that Mayor Miller is going to try to come, but I was thinking I was gonna be closer to six. So anyway, so what the first item is, is Saratoga Springs has a piece of property that's up south of the Allred, kind of the, next to the Allred and the Exchange, kind of that area up along Redwood Road. I believe Edge Home is the builder up there. It's 107 acres of property that can be developed fairly quickly. On the south end of Lehigh, on the south side of Pioneer Crossing and west of 2300 West, we have 100 acres of property that's owned by Mr. Chu that's currently zoned or designated as environmentally safe area. So in working with Saratoga Springs, I know that this, I believe this proposal's come to us in some regards over the last couple of years with, or Mayor Wilson may have been working with them. But I've been working with Saratoga Springs and thought it was worthy to bring it back to our attention. And basically what we're looking at is doing, and what I would like to see is us to authorize staff to work out an agreement where if the conditions are right and things like that, that we swap the 107 acres from Saratoga Springs for the Chu property down in the south end of Lehigh. So basically, it's almost a one-to-one acre swap. The reasons that I, and the reasons that I found this intriguing and beneficial to Lehigh is that the development there with Edge Home right now is, I believe Edge Home is looking to do high density, but if I understand correctly, I don't think they've been given, been given a certain number of homes that they're allowed to build right there. But it's contiguous to our property line. And the thing with Lehigh is, is Lehigh already has sewer lines, storm drain lines, other lines in place. And I do, I will need Lauren to kind of speak to that if you can. But there may be a concern that those lines are not large enough if we bring in this additional high density. But the benefit is, is that Edge Home is willing to and would be responsible for upgrading those lines to get them where they need to be. Part of the reason that Saratoga is looking to make this swap is because for them to get storm drain and other lines to where they need to connect, they're going to have to go through Lehigh City anyway. And it's going to cost them additional monies to put a lift station in and other infrastructure to make it work. Whereas Lehigh, we're there, our utilities are there. And it, to me, it just seems to make more sense to bring it into Lehigh, get the benefit of the impact fees, get the benefit of the property tax revenue, since the property is there and contiguous with our property line anyway. One thing I don't know is what Mr. Chu may or may not do in the future with his 100 acres and what we have designated as ESA. Mr. Chu has not been very active on the property he owns on the left, on the north, that's not in Lehigh. And he's not been very active with what he's gonna do with this property either on the south. So it could be several years out before Mr. Chu decides to do anything with his property. And we still don't know what that is. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Jeremy or Mark would want to come up and just help clarify some things, if that'd be okay with you, Mayor?
Sure.
And then open it up to questions.
Mayor Council, thank you very much. Mark Christiansen, Saratoga Springs City Manager. Councilmember Condy got this very accurate description. Mr. Chu, there's one thing that we hadn't discussed and hasn't been articulated. Several years ago, Mr. Chu gave the city of Saratoga Springs a property easement for a storm drain line over in Saratoga Springs. And one of the conditions that he'd asked for was that we help him facilitate the transfer of this property into Saratoga Springs. There was a request sent to you a number of years ago by Mr. Chu requesting that. And so that, to our knowledge, remains his request. Interestingly enough, all the property owners on the north that are east of the canal have contacted us and made the request that they be granted the ability to detach from Saratoga Springs and come to Lehigh. So it appears that all the landowners that are included in this transaction would be landing with their properties where they're requesting. So that would be consistent with our understanding of what the various property owners are. Other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions and make myself available for you.
Mark, just a point of clarification. In our meeting on Thursday, I believe that you said there weren't necessarily any density entitlements given to the development on the, is that your understanding?
That is correct, yeah. So whatever the current zoning is, is the zoning that's in place. When we were originally approached by Edge Homes, they basically said, hey, Lehigh's guaranteeing us X, whether or not that's true or not. And we said, we will match the densities that Lehigh is going to grant you. So that was the totality of the conversations as far as vested densities or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, let me just ask you real quick, because I'm familiar since 2002, I believe, of 11 different property disconnects from Lehigh to Saratoga Springs at the request of the various property owners. I'm not sure, I went through those and I studied those pretty closely when we were looking at another disconnect. I'm not familiar with the one from Mr. Chu. Kim, do you know about that one?
So I can, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I can talk a little bit about that. They did approach us about detaching and going into Saratoga. His property, however, crosses Pioneer. Pioneer actually, not in half, but cuts it in two pieces. What we asked them is if they would be willing to keep everything north of Pioneer in Lehigh, then we would potentially entertain detaching what was south of Pioneer. But that was the end of it. That was, that was the extent of that conversation.
Okay. Did you ever receive any disconnect document?
No. From what I remember, Mr. Chu wrote a letter, it's been a couple of years ago, just requesting that he be able to de-annex. And then that was when we started these conversations of, you know, we would want to keep the north part in Lehigh, but we may entertain the south part going to Saratoga. But that's, nothing formally was ever submitted.
Okay. And is that the extent of the conversation to you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Again, though, as part of our development agreement, when he granted us some easement, it's right at the end of Market Street in Saratoga, that was one of the terms that he had made with us was that we would work with him on that detachment.
Okay. Let me, let me start off. I'm gonna turn the time over to Lauren on this because we have actually had a number of discussions in regards to this. We've met with the property owner, Dave Maddox, on a couple of different occasions. We've looked at, and Lauren, you are free to correct me if I misrepresent this in any way, but I actually approached Lauren and asked him to go through and calculate the utility demand in that area and whether or not we could do it. Because I actually thought that there might be an opportunity here for us. He came back and said, we got, we have sewer issues, we don't have the water. Last we left at, I met with Dave, Steve, excuse me, Steve Maddox again. I approached Lauren, asked him to run the numbers again, but we still have, basically, we have no capacity right now. And on those two systems, I've asked him to continue to look at this, but it becomes pretty complicated. With that being said, Lauren, I'll let you continue.
I guess part of this relates to, they did have a density that they had defined, and so I used that density.
Yeah.
This actually encompasses the whole area that's under the canal, which we had talked about several times, but that wasn't-
And when, and when he met with us, he never did discuss about reducing the density.
No.
It was just, you know, this, this is the density.
We didn't offer, or agree or disagree. It just, he just indicated the density. Now, this particular proposal is more than just 55 acres. It's everything under the canal, so a much larger area than I thought. I thought it was just the Edge Homes piece that they were buying from McLachlan. But having said that, let me just kind of, it's kind of hard not, you know, there's a lot of mechanics here, but let me just explain a couple of things. Anything can be solved, I guess, with money and issues. First off, this area is not in anything we incorporated as far as our, when we bought the CWP water, we bought for this area. This would have to be a new purchase. That price has now gone up quite a bit. It's now, we bought it 5850, this is now around $10,000. So this area does not have, we can't really drill out here, we don't have any rights out here because the quality is not adequate to serve our culinary needs. So, and I think Steve probably, I'm not sure what, Saratoga, they may have the same issue, but I think Steve may be aware of that. I'm talking about Steve Maddox. But that could be as much as several hundred acre feet. There is some left at, in the CWP. They only have about, I think he told me the other day, 3,000. So it's not a lot, but enough to cover this. If we decided to purchase it, we would have to purchase that, and they would have to pay the funds to buy that water. So we don't have anything currently. It's contract, we'd have to work out with Central Utah on a purchase. That could be sizable amount. I'm guessing we're in the neighborhood of 500, 800 acre feet, so it's five to, five to $7 million just for the water itself. They probably have PI water, but they just don't have water for drinking purposes.
But isn't that their responsibility for any development, that they have to provide the water rights?
Right. I'm just giving you the information. He can't buy it directly from Central Utah. It has to be a city that does that.
Right. But on the other issue too, as far as the lines that you say we don't have capacity for-
No, I haven't got to that yet, I'm sorry.
No, I thought you mentioned something about it, but I-
He did. I'm just gonna talk about the water first.
Okay, sorry.
If I could just offer a point of clarification, they would have to purchase Central Utah water with us as well. So it's a net zero.
Yeah, I would assume that maybe-
On that particular point, that's a net zero.
Well, the price may be different. I don't know what your price is versus this. I don't-
It's future contracted.
Yeah. So the other thing, the tank that we have currently out there, it's brand new, but it's actually allocated with the Allreds, the Hardmans, the Holbrooks, and then they added a Stark piece, and they added a Turpent piece. There's just a little bit left in that tank. So we would, we would have to have a new tank. We do have room to build it there, we just don't, we'd have to actually have a new tank. We wouldn't want a small one just to pay, because that'd be a problem. My opinion is if we did this, we'd probably actually have to bond to make the other tank and build the other tank at this point, and then collect money as we went forward. Because that tank is probably allocated at this point. The sewer, the PI, probably not as, we do have to build a new reservoir in that west of Redwood Road, and that obviously would have to be in place before this could proceed. But we haven't built that yet, so we can enlarge it. So it's not a problem of having that bigger, just we'd have to know it before we started that project. But it would have to be in before we could service these, these people. The sewer does have some problems. It's not in that area, and I'd have to run, we brought in a bigger area now, so I'd have to run this whole area that they've got and what densities they have down. So I really can't speak too much about those pipes right now. I think we might be able to make it. As we get down to Jordan Willow's subdivision, there's a pump station there, and that does have to be, we have to actually increase the capacity of that and the pressure line. But we do need to do that probably regardless of who comes soon, that has to happen. So we may just have to increase the size of that. Currently, I don't have the capability of doing that. That project would have to be something we do as part of this.
When you say you don't have the capability, does that mean the money to do it, or what does that mean?
Physically, we don't have it currently. We don't have, we're expanding the pump station. Currently, we're actually expanding it, but it's not enough to service this area. We actually have to add another brand-new station next to it to pump over to 2300 West. But we could do that. It would just, the timing would have to be right, so we incorporate this all at the same time. I don't know if that's enough explanation to-
I think that was, that was the explanation we keep going around. And that's why I asked Lauren to actually go back and relook at it, because at first the answer was just no, because of the capacity. And I know you put in a lot of additional work in this, actually fine tuning the numbers. I'm not sure that we're there yet, but I, I mean, you can tell me that, but it seems like it is doable now, or before we just didn't think it was. It's just gonna cost some money.
Well, I guess that's my thing is, is that if it's a matter of money, you know, we, what I'd like to see is numbers put together and presented to Edge, tell them exactly what it's gonna take for it to work, and, you know, go from there. They're the ones that want to develop and build. We've, and they, I think they understand that we have constraints because we weren't planning on this 107 and the type of density that they may want. The other thing I like about this is, is that because there's been no entitlement given to them at this point, it's kind of a new slate, in my opinion, when it comes over to Lehigh. If they want to come to Lehigh, then, we don't have anything, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, that suggests what the zone would be, what we would allow. There's, there's nothing there that says, this is what you get if you come to Lehigh. So I, so I think that could be a good thing for Lehigh as well, and help us to improve some infrastructure out there and, like I said, and get that revenue there. And I think it would go real nicely with what's being built out there already, too. So, so that's, that's what I have. I would ask that, we can't make a decision, I understand that. Marilyn wrote in an email that there's a series of steps that have to happen in order for an agreement to come before the Saratoga Springs Council and our council to make this happen. I guess what I'm looking for tonight is to authorize staff, the mayor and staff, to begin that process and that negotiation of, with Edge and things like that, so that an agreement can be tried to be worked out and then brought to both councils and see where we go.
Lauren, maybe I can just ask you too. You'd mentioned that we'd have to build a new tank, put a new tank out there. And then, did you say that you had not figured this on all of this ground?
I had not. When the mayor and I talked, it was just with the, Edge was buying McLachlan piece, which was 55 acres. They showed me a drawing that had 100, 1100 units. It was higher than anything we have. We only go up to 12. But it doesn't, did not show the rest. Now, that, the rest of that could be added in. I just did not do that. It was just a request of Edge.
And I think that's probably, should be done before we, you know, make a decision, especially on this for the whole thing.
There was one about, about two months ago, somebody out there, another one of these property owners, had requested some information. But I don't know anything about the others.
Curious on the Chu property, have you looked at what, if any challenges there are on that?
Chu is, well, each parcel has its own issues, probably. Chu is actually lower in the pressure zone. It's on, it's in a different zone. It's actually on this side. It actually makes it a lot easier than being on the other side of the river. The other side of the river has a lot of challenges with water qualities and other things. Chu's property's not in that same boat. So all the things I just said don't necessarily apply to the Chu property.
Okay. Other council comments? Johnny?
Yeah, maybe, Chris, you could just go over again, maybe, what are the, what are the pros for Lehigh City if we were to do this? I understand if there's, there might be advantages for Saratoga Springs or whatever, but what are the pros for us?
Well, so the couple, the big pros that stand out to me is, is one, the Chu property, again, doesn't seem as valuable of a piece of property to me as this piece of property up here that Saratoga currently has in their city. I think the other thing that's a pro is that it's ready to be developed. That means that once an agreement's made, I think within two years, Edge Home will be pretty far out with what they're developing there. And that means that with this piece of property that is sharing a property line right now with Lehigh, that Lehigh would actually get the impact fees for that instead of our infrastructure, maybe our infrastructure is being used, the roads, things like that because of the location of this property, but we're not getting any revenue at all for it. So we're, to me, the biggest pro is getting the revenue, the impact fees for this, for this piece of property that could help with, not only with the infrastructure, infrastructure that's needed for this property, but for other projects, I think, that are throughout Lehigh City. So, I, again, I would say lastly, I think that it fits in with what's going on out there with Hardman, Allred, Holbrooks. I think the idea of what Edge wants to build out there is consistent with, with that. So I, I just think it's a good opportunity to include that into Lehigh.
That'd be consistent whether it's in Lehigh or Saratoga, though.
Yeah, that's true. I would, yeah, the same assumption would be made.
I can think of a lot of other properties that kind of are contiguous between us and Saratoga Springs that fit all of those pros as well. But unfortunately, Saratoga Springs would probably not be on board with doing that. Why do you think, why do you think they're on board with doing this?
Well, from what I understand, one is its costs. They, they would have to put in a lift station because they have to get to the Jordan River. And again, Mark, if I'm not understanding it correctly, but there's a lot more infrastructure cost on their end that isn't necessarily on our end because of the infrastructure we have pretty close to this property already. They would, they would have to come in, they'd have to go through Lehigh City to get to the river and other things. And so I think that's what makes it attractive. Down here on the south side with the new agreement that we just put in for the boundary agreement, I think that piece seems to make more logical sense to be in Saratoga Springs instead of Lehigh, where most of everything south of Pioneer Crossing on that side of 2300 West is in Saratoga Springs already anyway. So, I, but I think the infrastructure cost is a big issue for Saratoga as to why they're interested in swapping pieces of property.
Paige? Well, perhaps I, let me just make sure I understand what Lauren's saying, though. Although we do have some of that in place, it would take some substantial upgrades and beyond what we would otherwise have done.
And that builder would be responsible for those upgrades. Now, if we want to build a bigger water tank than what we need to supply them, there may be costs for us. But the upgrades are on, is their responsibility.
But bonding for a water tank seems like a pretty significant-
Well, that's something he just brought up tonight. So, yeah, that would be significant if we have to build a second tank that's as big as the one out there, but-
Yeah, that's a huge concern for me. I don't know that the revenue, potential revenue advantage-
But the benefit is, is if we have to build another water tank out there, I mean, what's the harm of having more water storage? I mean, two tanks-
We'll be paid back. It's just, we're funding it up. We would have, we just can't build a little tank.
No, that's what I'm saying. If we build a bigger tank to not just provide for this 100 acres, but it's bigger, it's more water storage, is it not? So to me, it's more water storage. How does that hurt?
It's expensive.
Well, but we need more water storage, too.
But if these people are in Saratoga, then they're the ones that need more water storage.
Yeah, you're right.
That, that's my concern, is that maybe the benefits to us don't match what the increased cost would be.
Any other comments? I, I guess to reiterate, you know, my position is, I, I've been through this. I asked the same question. Lauren, Lauren has cooperated very, very well. We've tried, we've been running the numbers. I'm still not sure if we're completed yet. We met with Steve twice. I met with the McLachlins, because they have an interest in this, and we're trying to, trying to make sure that they're, they're feeling satisfied with our efforts. And I think there has been a significant amount of effort. I just simply can't say, there's a lot of moving parts. My conversation with Steve Maddox when I was in with, and Lauren and Jason were both there, was that, let's, let's try to produce a number of what it would cost, what your responsibility would be. Probably the only hesitancy I have at all is just the fact that we, we're going to have to build more capacity than we need now. And we're gonna extend that out for quite a while before we pay for it. But I don't know if I'm extremely concerned about that, but it is a concern. So.
I guess my question is, is it, is it worth having staff? I understand what you're saying, that there's been time put for, for this. But I guess if the purpose is, is to come to an agreement and actually give Edge Homes, Steve Maddox, a number of what it's going to cost to provide the upgrades that we feel are necessary to make this work, is it worth staff doing that? Because as I understand, Steve has not been given the number. Is that correct?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gotten the number.
We're still working on that.
Okay. I think that, you know, for Steve, I think it's only fair to say, hey, this is, we understand that there's an interest for you to want to get going on this project, whether you're in Saratoga or Lehigh. But if you want to be in Lehigh, this is the number.
That was the conversation that we had with him the last time he was in.
But no number was given, correct?
No, because we're working on it.
Okay.
But in most situations, if a developer wants to come into Lehigh, that's their choice. And we work that out, you know, on whether that happens or not. We don't usually have to give up another piece of property. My other question and concern is if, has Steve been told that he's probably not going to get the 1100 units that he's-
I have not been.
And he's not entitled to that yet, but, you know, we, we're what, 12 units to the acre is the most we, we do? I mean, that might change his tune drastically, and he might not be interested at all.
And I have not been invited to any meeting that involves Steve at all. So I, I have not talked to Steve. Steve has not approached me. I'm just telling you what I know. And from those that have met with Steve. So you may be right. He may hear 12 and say, nope, we're done. But at least he knows. Right now, he doesn't know much.
Well, it is, it is true. We never did talk about reducing his density. He gave us the number, and that's what we've run the calculations on.
Okay. And I understand that. I'm just, it still goes back to, no definite number's been given to him. Whether density, cost, nothing's been given to him. To allow him to make a business decision, it's whether or not it's worth him to come to Lehigh and say, yeah, I want to come.
One of the problems is, you can't, I can't give a sliding scale.
I'm not asking for a sliding scale.
No, we have to have a, we gotta pick a number, because I can't, I can't do it.
Then pick a number.
But if we pick a number of-
If it's 12, if it's 12 units an acre, then pick the number.
But if we pick 1200, and then, and that's what it's built off of, and then when it comes before us, we say, yeah, we're only comfortable with 800, then all of a sudden he made a decision off of a number that was meaningless.
Yeah. The density is crucial to create a final number of any sort.
Okay. Again, I'm just saying, let's, let's, further to discussion, let's give him a number of what we think is reasonable, density and cost-wise, and see what he says. That's all I'm suggesting.
Let me make sure I understand you right. So, right, we're working on a number right now for his, for his density.
Mm-hmm.
Are you suggesting that we approach him and ask him for a lower density, come to a number, and then recalculate?
I'm suggesting that staff, based on what you think, what they think utilities are and what the upgrades are necessary, what they think a reasonable density would be for this area, and approach him with that number.
Okay.
So I'm not asking you to say, decrease it or increase it. I'm saying, this is what we think we could do, and here's the cost. And let him decide as the business owner.
So my concerns still would be, you know, let's say staff says, look, I think 800's a reasonable number. I think we can support that.
Uh, I, I think we can support that and they base the number off of that. But then when it comes before us, we as a council say.
Or, or planning commission.
Or planning commission says, yeah, 800 is too much. We're only comfortable with 400 or 600. Then all of a sudden his business decision is torpedoed based off of something that planning staff.
And I understand.
Planning staff can't deed him rights.
I, I understand what you're saying there, but that's, the, the point of this is that we come to an agreement, that if they're going to push this forward, there's an agreement drawn up and an understanding that this is what the agreement is. This is what the density is going to be. This is how much you have to pay. This is what upgrades are going to cost us to the system. You're responsible for that. You're responsible for this. The agreement is what sets that framework in place so that it doesn't come back to planning commissioner to us and, and some big throw, you know, curveballs thrown to them.
So has Saratoga, do, do you guys have a number of what it would cost you guys that you provided to him?
We have several numbers. So, uh, if I could, a couple of, of quick items. The Chu property is all included in a floodplain right now. So that's also got to be added to the, the development equation. So that land is probably not going to develop soon because that's going to be a pretty big undertaking. Um, on our side, um, really, uh, there's, there's a couple of major expenses. One is creating a storm drain line that will parallel probably a storm drain line that you're going to have from the edge of their property all the way out to the river. And so that was part of the easement that we discussed in the previous boundary agreement. So that's a cost that they already understand. So that could net out by upsizing pipes and resolving some of the concerns that were, were raised earlier. The sewer is obviously our big issue. Um, you run lift stations, we run lift stations. It's not the most efficient thing in the world. For us to service this area, we're creating a lift station exclusively for this that still runs down the hill and we still have to pump it again yet a second time. So again, the money that we spend on creating another lift station, and obviously that lift station is going to be scalable according to size, as Lauren was pointing out earlier, we have not committed to a density. We said that we would match whatever density Lehigh was giving across the border. So I'm assuming that, that you know those densities better. They've never made a formal submittal to our city. So I think a lot of this is stuff that could be talked about. The 100 acres, 100% of the property owners in that 100 acres has requested. Boyd Brown was, was talking with your city before. Newman is part of the Allred property discussion. Um, the other properties are all kind of lumped together with kind of, uh, Steve Maddox property and Edge's property. So all of them are 100% interested. All of them have come forward with desires to develop in the immediate future. And so that's part of our contemplation for this, which is this is something that's going to develop. As far as the costs go, as we've had conversations with each of the parties, they understand how the game is played. There's costs associated with developing their properties. And so I think these are all conversations they'd be willing to have with you. Uh, at this point though, we kind of have to cross the hurdle as to whether we can entertain that. And if I could make a proposal, my suggestion would be that we have staff from both sides of the table at the same meeting. So they're not playing us off of each other. Again, I don't know what the development terms are that you would be discussing for your community. We'll very clearly establish that. But what we don't need is the developers to go between saying, hey, 1100 units of density on 50 acres of property seems quite high. Uh, but we would like to be part of those conversations. And if this is something that you're interested in, I, I apologize. There's a, a lot of debate going on with your council and, and it's legitimate. You have legitimate concerns that you've all raised. My proposal and our council's request would be, let's sit down and let's, let's talk about the issue. Let's further it and let's see if there's some progress that could be made. On our part, a lift station, this, this would be a completely separate lift station. And I can't remember what it is, but let's just say a thousand feet of pipe outside of our city that's going to cut through your city. That's going to need an easement through, um, D, uh, D R Horton's property and things of that nature. So that's, that's the direction that we'd like to go. Don't know that this is necessarily ripe for a decision for you this week or tomorrow or next week or, or maybe even a few months. But I would suggest if we could work together with your, your council's blessing on trying to figure out and resolve some of these issues, and then we can probably bring all of the developers back, uh, at one unified, uh, meeting and, and say, this is our desires. And to your point, that your council and your city is not, um, being asked to front property or expenses on infrastructure and things that you're not going to recruit for some, some time.
Okay. I, I still need, and I appreciate that information and that line of thought, Mark, but I, 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 I need direction of where, of what to do here because I, I believe that, uh, staff has followed the procedure you're suggesting. I mean, we've met with the property owners. Uh, we've talked about, uh, you know, the, the infrastructure situation, what it would take to improve it. Uh, we've directed Lauren and his staff to calculate costs. That's just not done yet. That's, it's, that is a time consuming process. Okay? And he's been dedicated to it since, when did we start this? Yeah, there's been quite a bit of time that he's already dedicated it. So I'm not sure what else to do. I mean, we could bring him in and say, would you entertain a lower number and if it is, well, let me finish. If, if it is lower, you know, first of all, we can't guarantee anything because as Paul correctly stated, we still have to go through the process here. And, uh, I, give me, give me some direction of what you think we should do differently.
I, I think the one thing that it's not that to do differently, I think that like Mark suggested, let's get the staff together on both sides and, uh, see if there's an agreement, a framework from the staff perspective that they feel comfortable that their councils may support. And if so, then, then that can be taken to the developers, a unified group. Um, you know, if, if it doesn't pencil out, it doesn't pencil out. It doesn't hurt me at all. I just, I just see an opportunity, uh, that I thought was, I think, I think in my own belief is a, is a good opportunity for Lehigh to take a strong look at it. Um, I believe that I, I understand Lauren spent a lot of time on it so far, but I think that Steve is missing some critical information right now that allows him to make a decision.
It sounds, it sounds like he's missing that same critical information from Saratoga Springs though, which is why I asked that question. And if we at least have that number, I, I'm, I'm assuming that whatever Saratoga Springs cost would be, we would be less than that, correct? Or, or do we not even know that for sure? I mean, it's, it sounds like there's a significant burden.
I think there'd be costs on either side. I'm sure they have costs. We have costs. I, I can't say whether that'd be. I just don't know that answer. I think the biggest thing I found was just that the tank was one of the biggest things, was just, you just can't build a small one.
Yeah.
So that of all the things, that's probably the, the biggest thing I uncovered was the tank issue.
Okay.
And that isn't a, a stumbling block necessarily. It's just that it's something we have to be aware of. And he can't pay for the whole tank. His development won't do that. So.
He'll only pay for the capacity that he actually needs.
We really do have to come back to you. Yes, are you willing to go forward on it? You know, and that, that's not a bad thing. I'm just want to make sure you're aware that that's an issue.
I guess.
It's all seemed upsizing.
Yeah.
You know, they haven't been built yet, a lot of those. So I can, I can incorporate whatever we decide into those facilities. That's the one that kind of hit me and the water rights, but it sounds like they may have the same issue with Saratoga on the water rights.
And, and I guess Mayor to, you know, if I'm, you know, looking out for Lehigh, um, if, if Lauren is spending this much time trying to get these numbers, but yet there's a majority of the council that just doesn't think that they'd be able to entertain this at all, then let's make that decision and have Lauren quit working on it and let Saratoga know we're not interested and move on. But if, if we're going to keep spending his time on it, then I think it's only worth that we get the staff, the two staffs together and work out a framework that we can present to Steve Maddox and move forward. But if we can't do that, then let's quit wasting Lauren's time on this project in my mind.
Okay.
I agree.
So what do we want to do as council then?
I can't make a motion, right? It's not an action item. I wouldn't be interested in, I wouldn't be interested in furthering the conversation. So. That's where I am.
Paul?
I, I just don't see the benefit to Lehigh either. Because I, I think that the property being developed anyway, is there's so many unknowns as far as what is, what's going to happen, whether Edge is comfortable with 1100 units, what density they're comfortable with. Yeah.
I, I guess I'm interested in, you know, anytime we can get, have property and have it developed in Lehigh and, and gain the impact fees and, 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 and see the positive, I'm interested in, you know, swapping properties. Um, I guess I'm not interested in that. So.
Can I make one comment?
Lawrence knows.
If you don't mind, I, it might help you a little bit. Uh, there is a, not to be for or again, because I think I'm kind of neutral on the issue. The densities do cause a lot of problems if they're real high. That does create, I can't even get into road issues. I mean, we've got a lot of issues if the densities are as high as they talk about. It's way beyond what I've got here. Cause now he's talking densities we don't even have in our city that I know of.
Yeah. Let me just throw out a couple of quick numbers.
Let me just, but let me just finish. There is a natural barrier along the ridge. If you go out there, there is a canal and it drops off. So it is a natural barrier and it, it, uh, and if you were looking at setting a line, that isn't a bad line to set. My concern is if it wasn't included in what we've got and, and if the densities get too high, then it doesn't make a lot of sense. But there is a natural boundary. If you go out there, you can see this canal and it drops, oh, I'll bet it drops what 20 feet. Where did you? Oh, there he is. You moved up. It's quite a bit of drop, isn't it? I'll bet it's 15 feet from that canal down to the.
I'd go probably 30.
Yeah, it's, it's, so it's a natural drop. Uh, you know, in, in the plus side, there is a natural barrier there that kind of would fit, you know, uh, uh, between the communities.
So I just wanted to make a comment and I appreciate what you're doing with the, you know, general planning like we do. We make a lot of assumptions.
Jeremy, you have to give us your name.
Sorry, Jeremy Lappin, uh, Public Works Director, Saratoga Springs. This whole area is mostly undeveloped, other than the recent project by Edge Homes. And I'm assuming in your master plans, you guys have made a lot of assumptions about the densities that these undeveloped properties will have. And so I'm guessing every time one of these properties comes in and goes through entitlement process, there'll be a lot of discussion, especially if they look at doing zoning, something different than you've assumed in your master plan. Now, those things will all affect some of your capital facilities planning. And so in that aspect, this seems very typical as far as when you have an undeveloped property, you know, typically you don't ask the property owners, you just use the general plan and make some assumptions on the density and start master planning infrastructure. So on the, on the water tank, I just want some clarification. I'm assuming you've not pre-allocated or, or pre-guaranteed undeveloped properties. That's kind of first come, first served as far as the capacity goes.
The trouble is they've, they've, we have an area plan. Those have all set. So.
How many, how many years out, you know, obviously you have a lot of undeveloped property and that tank was sized. Your, your, your absorption rate's still going to be the same, right? You're going to take down a thousand, whether you annex a, a thousand acres or one acre, you're still going to issue the same number permits a year and grow at, at a certain rate.
No, they're actually growing way faster than, and they're already allocated and in an area plan, which means they're, and they're all in a fast mode.
Right. Now we have, we, we deal with the same thing. How many, how many years out do you, even without this annexation, do you think that tank will run out of capacity?
I, they'll use up the capacity probably in two years. It'll be gone.
That tank will be out of capacity?
It's that quick. Uh, the Allreds was a quick, that, they, they figured like a couple of years. They're not sitting on. Now Ivory's a little different. They, they go a little slower. Edge is not, you know them. They, they're in today, out tomorrow.
So if anybody else in that service area for that tank comes back to you and, and wants to zone higher than what you assumed in that model, then, then you're.
We have to, we will be looking at a tank.
You'd be looking at a new tank in that same scenario as well then?
Yeah. We will be looking at a new tank in the future here. Correct.
Kim, you had some.
Yeah. I just thought it would be helpful to, to give you some numbers on the density. So if we assume 1100 is what Edge Homes would like to see, that's, that on the 55 acres would be 20 units per acre. At 12 units per acre, which is our highest, it would, they'd be at 660 units. So that's almost half, um, of what they're asking for. If, if assuming that's the number that they need to arrive at. And just to kind of put a little bit of perspective on this, um, the Cold Spring Ranch was the, which was the Allred property. That was 1300 and that's not just residential, that includes the commercial. That's 1300 ERUs or equivalent residential units. And it was on 290 acres. So that was only about four units per acre. The exchange is 12 units per acre. It's, um, 795 units on about 72 acres. So anyways, so this would, if, if we're going up to that high of a number, it would be very high density compared to anything we have in that area. Holbrook Farms, if you look at that as a, the entire project is about four units per acre as well. So.
So Kim though, on this, on this, it's just like the Golding annexation is coming to us tonight. Uh, the difference is Golding has proposed a concept as far as what, what type of zoning would be laid out where this, really it's, it's a blank slate. We, we are assuming that Steve wants X number, but no one knows. Correct?
He's told us what his density is or how many units are going.
I guess what I'm saying is, and I understand where Johnny and Paul are coming from and I respect, respect that. And, uh, but if, if we were to go back to Steve and said, look, this is the, these are the zones that we feel would be appropriate for this piece of property, if you were to come into Lehigh. And he says, nope, it's not good enough, then what's the harm? Lauren just said that that tank out there that we just built is going to be out of capacity in two years. So we're going to have to build another one anyway. I, you know, I'm, it, it, yeah, it's, it's homes. It's not commercial. It's not, it's not retail. It's not sexy, I guess. But I, I think that we're, we're kind of hearing one thing and then it gets explained away by another thing. And, you know, yeah, it's one piece of property for another, but it's developable property versus something that's not developable. And I, I guess that's what intrigues me about it. So anyway, you know where I stand. I don't think it hurts to move forward with the staff's meeting with each other, but that's my point of view and I'm just one person.
Yeah. Well, I still need to hear from, uh, Mike and Paige.
If you're ready, I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of neutral on it myself, but I would want to see us maybe finish what we've been doing. I mean, you mentioned Mayor that it wasn't even really finished where we were at and what we knew. And I would say, yeah, let's finish that and then make a decision on it.
Okay. Paige?
Um, I still have yet to hear what I would consider to be sufficient benefit for Lehigh. I understand why it would cost, I mean, just throwing out, maybe Saratoga 10 bucks to do it and cost us $2 to do it. But that's still worse than, than nothing that it would cost and maybe the buck we'd get back. So I, and the other thing is I agree with Paul that there are too many unknowns. I'm really surprised that we're not hearing from Mr. Maddox. Um, he's the one with the most at stake here and I think it would be important to bring him into the conversation. If Saratoga has a vested interest in making sure this property comes into Lehigh, you probably ought to get him on board with that change. And I'm guessing with the density that that's not going to be an easy conversation. But I think he's the one that needs to be having it, not us having it on his behalf, if that makes sense. So I'm, I'm satisfied with what staff has done so far. And unless I hear something different or more, then I, I think maybe we've done enough.
Okay. I think it's clear, you know, I mean, when we started this process, I was very much in favor of, of entertaining this thought. And that's why Lauren and I met and I called Steve in on two different occasions. But, you know, I, I appreciate the comments, uh, but I'm hearing from three city councilmen, basically not a positive response. I, I, I would think, I, I would still be open personally if Steve wanted to contact me again, we sat down because we have talked. I've talked to him on the phone trying to work this out, but we haven't talked about changing density. That conversation hasn't happened. It's just how can we make his number work? And I'm happy to have that conversation with him, but I, I don't know what I'm hearing if council is.
I, I guess I would, I guess I would say if you, I, I'm willing to have you have that conversation with him and he's, if he's willing to come down significantly off that number, then it might be worth at that point having Lauren u- use his time. But if he still sticks at 1100, then there's, there's, I, I have no, no interest at all in having that conversation. If he's willing to come down, e- even entertain, you know, what our max is, you know, somewhere in that 600 range or lower, then it might be worth having Lauren, uh, explore it. But above that, I've got no interest.
And, and again, I, I guess maybe I'm just being clear enough, but, and I apologize, but it goes back to, is it worth having the, the conversation with him? And I don't think we go to him and ask him, are you willing to come down in density? I think we go to him and say, here are the zones that we would be entertaining for this property.
Well, that's essentially, that's essentially what I'm saying. If it's 600.
Well, no, I'm saying rephrase it. Don't go to him and say, what are you allowing? What would you accept saying? Just put, just say, this is, this is it. This is the cap.
You're, you're saying the same thing, just a different way.
Okay. But what, what I'm hearing too is, is that there was two that said, no, let's end it and I'm fine. Let's end it. But then it's, well, if the mayor had a conversation and we could do this, then yeah, maybe I'd entertain it. So again, here we go back and forth with, what do we want to do?
To, to be clear, if Steve Maddox were to be willing to entertain something around 600 units or less.
I understand that, but that's not what you said when you said, no. You said, I'm not interested in it.
Can I finish?
Yeah, sure.
If, if he's willing to entertain 600 or less, then I think it's worth entertaining Lauren's time or using Lauren's time. I think that's a five minute conversation with him. The mayor calls him and says, hey, this is what I. The mayor calls him and says, hey, this is what I heard from the council. If you're not willing to come down, and you, you can call it zoning, you can call it density, whatever you want to call it, if you're not willing to come down to this level, then they don't want Lauren to spend any more, any more time on this. And if he says no, then we're done, and we're at the same point as we are now. So I, I'm okay with the mayor spending five, 10 minutes, whatever it is, on the phone, just running that past him. But if, if he comes back and says, no, I, I need 1,000 units to make this pencil out, then, well, great, you're, you can work that out with Saratoga. I don't know if...
All, all I was saying was, is that I, I think that's great, but I, it was a no first, and then we start to change our minds when we... So I'm just asking, let's put the thing either, if, if it's the mayor having one last conversation and throwing something out to him, great. As long as it leads to a conclusion.
Paige, are you okay with me having that conversation redo density?
I am, and I would like to say thank you also to the gentleman from Saratoga. I appreciate you coming. I think we're really, we really want to be good neighbors. We have the same goals for our city that you do for yours. So hopefully, you know, everybody can be satisfied with the conclusion, and I would appreciate it if you do.
Well, we're all struggling from high, high-density requests right now. I mean, it's a difficult thing for us to deal with. The infrastructure demands are high, and we're having a hard time keeping up with them now. It, it frankly keeps me up at night, wondering if we can support the densities that are coming, okay? So I, I know where Paul is. Johnny, that conversation, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to item 2.3 since you're, this is also, I think, will require some conversation with Saratoga Springs, and, and this is also yours, Chris.
Okay, so again, I, I want to stress that I am not an engineer, I'm not technical in this regard, is when it comes to storm drains and things like that. Again, this is just another effort that I've been working with Saratoga to try to be a good neighbor. So on 2300 West, as you go south, as you get to the, to the south end of the Snow Springs subdivision, Lehigh, in the past, we built out our storm drain to go further past that, believing that we would have development come in. But recently, we've made a new agreement with Saratoga Springs that defined the boundaries there. And that line that goes south for storm drain only, Snow Springs subdivision is no longer in Lehigh City. And there's, there's, as I understand it, and I'm more than willing to be corrected, around that immediate area, there's no development that Lehigh can have done that would bring impact fees to help pay for the money, the impact fees that were used to build out that line, to extend it out. Saratoga Springs now, because of the boundary changes, has that property. We, we know that they've got development coming in there, and as I understand it, talking with Mark and his staff, that there's a couple of options, and, and I'll have Mark correct me if I'm wrong, but the first option could be is, do we want to entertain an opportunity for them to purchase that line from the, the boundary and, and, or the excess capacity? There's a memo that you guys should have had, and I apologize it got to you just tonight, but Bowens and Collins, as you go through it, suggests that there's about 25 CVS, CV, CFS, which I believe is cubic feet per second, is that right, Lauren? They believe, they believe on the information they've been given, that there's about 25 CVS, CFS available there that Saratoga Springs could utilize for their development. The other option could be is, is that we allow Saratoga to run a parallel line that would jog into this line as well to help, and, and then they would be responsible for getting the line to Utah Lake for the drainage of the storm water that goes into that. The issue that Saratoga Springs now, you, you'll ask me, well, what's their issue with what's here? The problem with, with, that they're facing is, is they can't build lines on both sides of our line because there's not enough room. They're going to have developments going on both sides of 2300 West, and there's not enough room to build lines on either side of our line to accommodate storm drain. So the benefit to me, the reason I wanted to put this on the agenda, and I appreciate the mayor and those who supported it being on the agenda, is that if there's a financial agreement where a purchase is made or, or something that staff work out, that the two staffs work out, that's us hopefully recouping some of the costs that we already expended on this project, that we don't have a way to recoup because it's no longer in our city boundaries. It's something that Saratoga Springs could use immediately.
Are we essentially selling capacity?
I, well, in this case, I believe, and I, if I'm not correct, I stand to be corrected, but I believe we're selling the actual line as it goes south.
The entire line?
The entire line south of Saratoga, of Snow Springs. Am I correct, Mark, or?
If, if I could, maybe I can, I can simplify a little bit.
Can I clarify one thing? You can stand right there, you don't have to sit down, because I, and I just want to make sure, because I think I know the, the first answer to this. You're, we are only talking storm drain, we're not talking sewer.
No, that was my fault, and I apologize.
Okay, I thought that was the case, so...
That's a part of my inexperience of being an engineer.
So let me...
And I do realize sewer is much different than storm drain, but a storm drain line only.
Okay, so this, this is, this was brought up to the city council before, and we, but, but this is different, right? Now, this is a different proposal than what, what we've heard before, right?
Yes, and the reason I believe it's different is twofold, and then Mark, I'll let you. One is it's storm drain, two, the agreement for the city boundaries has been made after we had the discussion on this last time, this area.
If I made, there's a third difference. The previous discussion was initiated by the developer, whereas this is coming from the city, I mean...
That is, that's true, because it was, it was actually D.R. Horton, representative that contacted me twice before, and we, and I knew, I know her quite well, and, and that's when I brought it to the council for your, for that discussion, is after the...
That's correct.
Could I clarify one? When this was done, there were no impact fees used on this line, it was purely the developer. They only built the size they needed. Now, sometimes it gets a little bigger, but it wasn't, there was no oversizing of the line. It was strictly for Snow Springs. We did not put any money into this line. Just wanted to clarify that. And it was only, now I couldn't, unfortunately, our, our, all the drainage information is being copied somewhere. I can't get it, but it was strictly, the drainage report and the line was strictly for Snow Springs area. We didn't put any extra money in it, just so you're aware.
Okay.
So Mayor, Council, if I could simplify the issue, I, I, we've used up far too much of your time. You have a storm drain line that runs down 2300. It is at the exact elevation that we would need to meet in order to meet grade. Excellent engineering on your part. The challenge is, is where we have development and, and city on both sides of the street. We can't build one line to service the area. Our proposal is multi. If you're willing to sell the line to us from the, to the south, and whether or not that's, that's doable, this is, this is one option. I'm going to give you two or three. That option would be that we could purchase that from you, we could preserve some capacity for you if you need some additional capacity for future development. If there's excess capacity, we would acquire that from you. We could maintain it from there. Going back to the question you asked earlier, what's the benefit to Lehigh? We would be responsible to maintain it, and then ultimately to replace it. So your long-term investment would go away, because we would then be able to, to take that from the city boundary out. That's one option. Another option would be, the, the, the cost for us is we're building two parallel lines with yours sandwiched in between. The, the way that the rights-of-way work, it becomes very challenging. So another option would be, as is proposed, I don't know if you've got a copy of, of this particular picture. Our proposal would be that we adjust your line slightly. We build you some new line, we would take over your old line, but that would give us enough room to be within the current easements. In that case, you continue to own your line, you continue to have all the capacity that you have in that, but at least we'd be able to then access the eastern easement through that property and keep it in, in the current right-of-way. There's other alternatives that we'd be more than happy to, to consider and explore. Again, we wanted to just throw this out as a concept. We do have, you know, infrastructure issues down there, it's a fairly flat line, but we'd be happy to work with your staff on that, and we'd just be looking for some direction from you all as to whether you'd be interested in selling. If not, could we work some arrangement out to, to shift that line? Again, we could certainly pull together the numbers for you, that would be your long-term savings if we were to maintain the line. I think it's about 1,500 feet or so. If, if that was something that we acquired from you, that we would then be responsible to replace and work some sort of arrangement out. So simplifying it, happy to answer any questions.
This, this one for me, I'm comfortable with staff. We're looking at what, what options are, whether it be selling it or whether, if we think there needs to be capacity at some point, you know, whether it's developable or not. I'd be comfortable with staff spending time on this and exploring what the best option is to preserve whatever capacity we need. If we don't, then I don't have an issue with selling it.
Best suited for that, so this, this is new to us, so we'll take the information. We're not trying to be difficult, Mark. Just so everybody knows, I work with Mark now on a regular basis and have, and have worked with Jeremy in the past and appreciated those, those opportunities and those discussions we've had. So it may seem like we're trying, trying to be difficult, but we, we safeguard our infrastructure system here, you know, pretty concerned about it. So as I know you guys are, and so we just want to make sure that, that we check everything out first, make sure everything works, and we're not cutting ourselves short, so...
Well, and thank you, Mayor. If I could, just, our city is very interested in, in building relationships. In the past, there's been, you know, challenges and issues, and, and, you know, frankly, we're, we're ready to, to work with you, and we're ready to, to, you know, kind of look past the old issues and try and find solutions to the future. Obviously, you need to protect your interests, and we're asking the question, which is, you know, is it the best interest for us to have three storm drain lines built in the exact same street? And so this, transportation, you know, there's so many issues that our communities overlap on. We're happy to be partners with you, and, and thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you for, you guys for giving me the time to, to share this, so thank you very much.
No problem. Reno, are you finally here?
Yeah, sorry.
Come on up here, tell us about the accident briefly. You're not supposed to be texting while you're driving, right?
I was in the car that wasn't in the accident.
Oh, okay.
I'm just going to make that clear. A car that wasn't in the accident.
I wasn't driving either.
Okay.
So we're in the Draper city parking, right in the front, and the guy that was driving his car just backed into a parked car.
To an off-duty Sandy City Police officer.
There you go. That makes it easier, then you have to wait for the other police department to show up.
Yeah, that went really well.
That's funny. Okay, well, you're up. Presentation on the Refuge Derived Fuel Plant.
Okay, we, we have a little video to show you all. So by the way, my name is Jeremy Roberts by introduction, and I do investment banking for my career, and one of the companies that we have in our portfolio is a company called Herhoff. And Herhoff's a German company. Let me, let me start off by kind of introducing it. The company's German, it's owned by a company called Elektor, on the Greek stock exchange, it's a very large company. They have 20 facilities in Europe right now that manage municipal waste. They have another 13 that do biogas plants that would take green waste. We're actually working right now with a lot of the dairies because they have a problem with cow manure, they have to get rid of it. It gets into water supply, so we're going to take it and make electricity out of it. But one of the neat things about this is, first off, Herhoff is not asking any city municipality for any funds whatsoever. There's no ask for any bonding, we're not asking you to invest a single cent into our facilities, we'll do that for ourselves. The other thing is, is that as you consider this as an option for your city, the company, the way that it works, and we're talking to the finances in just a second, they would lock in your tipping fees for 20 years. So as soon as we kind of determine what those tipping fees are, they would not increase for over 20 years. The other nice part is, is that there's actually a way that you can make money from recyclables, other than trying to just throw them in the landfill, which is what almost everyone's doing. So with that, let me kind of go through the company, because it's in German, and I don't know if you can speak. So here's the first thing about their facility, okay? And we've talked a lot with Camp Williams, and in the buffer that's around Camp Williams, they like the idea of putting a facility there. And so as we've talked with your staff a little bit, we've thought that, and you're a city administrator, that's an option. Their facility, as you can see on the video, is completely indoors. That facility right there does about 90,000 tons worth of waste, and I think we calculated that your city takes about 50,000 tons approximately, is that about right?
That might be a little high. We looked into it more.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're looking at about 24,000 tons worth of municipal waste, so you'd be about a little more than a, a fourth about, into the facility itself, or about a fourth. So it's completely indoors. No smells escape the building, there's no incineration at all at the facility. It's negative pressurized, so any smells or any dust that are inside the facility, they stay inside. The company currently does about 70% of the municipal waste in Germany. And if you take a time to Google, you will see that Germany is actually importing trash from neighboring countries because they're making so much money off of the program. So what happens is, also notice there's no bags blowing around, there's no waste. So a garbage truck shows up, this is a just wonderful video, the production cost was high. So the video, the, the garbage truck shows up, and there's sensors, and it shows that garbage is there. So it opens these bay doors, and there's a big, huge cement pit where it goes that we can see right there. The way that they engineer the plants is pretty remarkable, so those, where they dump the garbage, it actually holds seven days' worth of waste. And the reason why they do that is any maintenance, anything that has to happen on it, they have seven days to do maintenance. Little things like changing belts on conveyor belts, that kind of a thing. So it's kind of great the way, then, once they actually dump the trash, also, your residents no longer need to separate recyclables and non-recyclables any longer. You'll see why in a second. So this big, huge crane that actually does deliver toys, unlike the ones you guys see at, your kids do, mine do.
I don't want what it's got.
Yeah, I know, right? Amen. Well, actually, I think you probably do, because this is going to be a revenue source for your city. So here's what's kind of cool.
Got a toilet?
It is. It actually will do an engine block. I didn't believe them, so they actually put an engine block in for me. It made a horrible sound, but it did it. So what happens is it takes the garbage and it pre-shreds it. It's not a fine shred, but it'll shred it down. And then once they shred it, it takes the garbage and it puts it in these drying boxes, and it biodigests them for seven days. And the biodigestion, it gets rid of any of the bacteria and stuff you usually normally see. By the way, it's all computer-controlled, as you can kind of see right here. It also makes it so about 50 to 70% of municipal waste is water. And so they capture the water, they filter it out, and then they use the water for fire suppression and also landscaping. By the way, their landscaping's really pretty, they have a lot of water for it. But when they capture that, they're also capturing the methane, they use that to generate electricity as well. And so as they go through and they digest it, it gets rid of a lot of the, the problems with it. I took Senator Kurt Bramble, who's here with us, to see their facilities, and one of the things that we were so surprised about is that there's no smell in these facilities, because nothing's rotting. And so in these boxes, it'll sit there for seven days. After it's been sitting there for seven days, I'm going to skip forward just for a second. You can see where they start sorting the trash. They sort in these enclosed things, they, they sort it by ferrous and non-ferrous metals. They recycle batteries down to AAA, they recycle glass and plastics. Also, the plastic bags that everyone's aware of, they're such big problems, they actually do recycle them and they become cutlery. So when you have your fine china that you get from KFC, that's usually what it is. So anyhow, the nice part too is, is that right now, the company does not put its recycled materials on, you kind of the commodities market, as it were, you know, put them in a shipping container and ship them to China. For example, their glass, they separate by color. All of their green glass is going to Heineken. All of their white glass or clear glass is going to Coca-Cola and other bottlers for soda. All their amber glass is going off to, I can't remember the name of the company, but it owns Anheuser-Busch, is that big German beer company there. And so unlike everybody else who's, who's trying to figure out what to do with recyclables, they already have customers. Batteries, one of the most difficult things about batteries is actually making the case that the battery goes inside of. So when they recycle batteries, they take them back, they use an acid wash, then they actually put a new, the new chemicals inside for the batteries. With plastics, they separate plastics not just by color, but also by type. In Europe, Lego buys their, a lot of their plastics. And so one of the companies that also buys their, their recyclables, vinyl window manufacturers, they take the plastics and the glass, and then they add chlorine to make vinyl for it, and they make vinyl windows as well. So they already have buyers, so when they're recycling, they're not recycling just to give to somebody. They're recycling specifically in a way that their client wants it, which is, which is really good for kind of everybody. And you'll see as they recycle this, just one second. So they're sorting trash still, and then you can see, this is the glass right here. And so they actually have an optic eye, there's no hand sorting at all, this is all done, well, automatically. But, so this is the green glass, you can see the clear white glass coming out as well. And so they have, like I said, 20 facilities currently operating, and we are building one right now in Latuella County, we'll begin... And so they have, uh, like I said, 20 facilities currently operating, uh, and we are, uh, building one right now in LaToila County. We'll, uh, begin construction hopefully in September there. And so you can kind of see, these are some of their facilities. Uh, wow, that's really a great picture. That was high production value as well. So anyway, this is one of their plants right here. And once again, you can see that it's in a forest. There's no bags blowing around. There's no huge Jurassic Park nets. Um, it's really quite a little bit of a different way of handling trash. Uh, so the ask would be, is if the council and the mayor were, were interested in moving forward with it, um, we would, uh, simply have an agreement where the tipping fee stays where it is. The parts of the tipping fee that the city keeps, they would continue to keep, that would not change. And, uh, you would give us your waste stream. So that's pretty much it. So happy to answer any questions.
Would an actual facility be built here or?
We would be building a facility. The, the place we've talked about, uh, very, very early stages is in the buffers on the Camp Williams on the Lehigh side. There's a little, uh, little government facility that uses a lot of electricity and they might be able to use some of ours. It's actually good because it's a green energy.
And then just to make sure I'm on the same page, but all of our trash would then go to this facility.
Absolutely. The only thing, we can take electronic trash. The only thing we can't take is that hospital waste that nobody really can. And then also stuff like nuclear and radioactive, but that's not an issue in municipal waste.
So would waste management still be the collecting it?
Absolutely.
They'd just be delivering it to you instead of, uh, the, the currents, North Point?
Yeah. And, and the thing is, is that, you know, I, I have, I was a Lehigh resident for quite some time. Actually Paul was one of my neighbors. Um, one of the things that you're going to see is, is that it's inevitable that the cost for transportation to go down to Bayview is going to be very expensive for residents. You can't avoid that. The continued cost of doing more and more cells is a cost that's going to continue to increase. Tipping fees are going to go up. There's going to be more and more and more, uh, costs for citizens and residents and for the city. Uh, in this way, uh, you have no costs other than the tipping fees you're already charging. And those are fees for you, not for me.
Johnny, just off the top of your head, is there, because we, as part of North Point, we bought into the Bay.
Bayview.
Is there anything that would? I mean, I, I know it's, that's probably something we'd have to look at, but is there anything off the top of your head that?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what the contract, you know.
I, I did a little research on that and my understanding is if we opt out, that's fine. We can opt out. But if for whatever reason this doesn't come to fruition and we want to try and get back in, we'd be on the hook for all, all those costs as though we were never a part of the district. So we'd basically be joining from ground zero. So, um, that's, that's something we would need to go into with, with our eyes wide open and, you know, I don't know if we enter into, put something like that into the agreement. I mean.
Well, we'd actually, we'd suggest a performance bond for that is what we, we'd actually would love to do that for you.
Yeah.
And like I said, you know, we've, um, God bless Mayor Tom Dolan. He had somebody come to him who had a suggestion for trash and it didn't work out quite that we expected. In, in this case, uh, we have been operating for over 20 years, um, and we're more than happy to put our money where our mouth is. So we would suggest a performance bond so that the taxpayers aren't left holding that bill if, if for any reason we weren't able to perform.
If that were the case, really I, I don't see any other negatives. I mean, there, there could be some political pushback, but I think through education and things like that, I think we could overcome a lot of those concerns, but really that, that would be my only concern, would be, um, any repercussions of us trying to get back in North Point.
And I, I think one of the other things that's a nice thing is that there's a really great green message here, where not only are we no longer just going to throw stuff in the ground and let it just sit there, but everyone's recycling. And it's not just recycling where, uh, you know, like, like currently recycle programs are where there are problems for every community. Uh, in this case, you actually have where it's going to enterprises and it's doing business development. And also as well as, is that, uh, there is no risk to the taxpayers in terms of building the facility. We would not ask for, uh, performance bonds from you. We do not want post-performance tax incentives. Literally, we just want to buy line at fair market value and construct our own facility.
With, with this facility too, you say there's no smells. I mean, how close are residents actually living to some of these that are built?
Well, you can see right here, I mean, those are houses just to the right of that facility, um, on the picture right there. So they're really close. But the thing is, the only reason why you wouldn't want this entirely close to residential is a little bit of traffic. I figure if you've got about 90,000 tons, you're going to have about 40, uh, garbage trucks a day going to the facility. So there's a little bit of traffic, not much. Uh, with the recyclables, we have probably about, uh, eight to 10, uh, 18-wheelers that'll leave the facility every month. Not daily, every month. Um, but I, I think that living next to, I mean, literally the building's about the size of a Costco. And I wouldn't want to live next to a Costco either. Um, not for smells or anything like that. It's just my personal thing. Yeah. But so.
Sorry.
Go up, please.
No, just a couple items for clarification because you've mentioned tipping fees a couple times, but I, I, I'm not sure I understood you clearly what you said. So you said, we're still responsible for tipping fees. Are there tipping fees to this plan?
Not for us. So here's the thing is you currently are charging about, I'm assuming like $22, $26, somewhere in there for tipping fees.
Around there, yeah.
Okay, those would stay the way that they are for 30 years or sort of 20 years. And the reason why is the way that the company works is 20 or more future contracts. So for example, like with Heineken buying the glass in Europe, they have a 20-year contract with them to purchase the glass. So the company has a really stable performance. And it's publicly traded. You can go look at the, at the numbers from the company, but they've been really successful, um, in their business model and practices. So for 20 years, while the, you know, for the first part of the contract, while you're taking your trash, uh, your tipping fees would stay exactly where they are.
Okay. So as we grow and, uh, at some point, what would happen if, if you couldn't accept the amount of, uh?
Not an issue. That's a great question. If you look at the facility right here, I'm going to use a little cursor. Those drying boxes, all they do is add onto it. So these are built modular. The largest facility they have right now is just outside of Venice, Italy. It takes about half a million tons, uh, every single solitary year. So for that facility, for it to increase, let's say by 180,000 tons, this part of the building right here, they would double in size. That's literally it. So they just put more drying boxes in and the facility can take care of it.
So in the agreement, would, would it include your expansion based on our?
Absolutely. And we would cover those costs as well. So we would not want the, we're, we're pretty adamant about the fact that we don't want the taxpayers to pay for anything. And the tipping fee is something that you're assessing anyway. It's not something that we would be.
From a footprint perspective, you said that, uh, a facility this size could, uh, take 90,000?
Yes.
And we're, you know, for easy math, call it 30. So would you, would you build it to, for a capacity of 90 and only process 30?
Sisters, um, that are very, very interested in coming here. We, actually the mayor of, of Herman's with us, um, and he can speak a little bit about where his city's at with it. But, um, there are some other, uh, cities that are in your area that would like to take their trash there as well. Um, and so we've, we've got, uh, Saratoga Springs will be with them on Thursday. Uh, Eagle Mountain's also reviewing it as well. So some of your cities around here are very interested in taking trash there. So it would be multiple cities.
So with that same question though, how much property did you say again?
Six to eight acres maybe.
And how much is this one that can handle 90, the actual footprint?
It's about the size of a Costco. That's, that's where to look at it.
Couple hundred thousand square feet.
So yeah, you're thinking about a couple hundred thousand square feet. I mean, you can kind of see the truck right here, um, right where the cursor is. So for scale, I mean, you're, you're literally talking about the size of a Costco.
If I could, we are running out of time. We've run much longer than I anticipated. Uh, what do you need from, from us and what, what is the timeframe?
Well, what we'd want from you eventually would be just, uh, that you would tell us you want.
So right now it's just for consideration and discussion.
Yeah. If you tell us you want our waste stream, we'll work with the staff and get agreements in place and we'll start constructing our building.
Okay. We'll continue to discuss it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Real quick, we have, uh, are there any questions on the agenda tonight? Everybody's had an opportunity to go through it. Okay. Seeing an administrative report. Do we have anything on that?
No.
Mayor and council reports.
We do have on Thursday, we have the, uh, golf course meeting for all elected officials. So we'd like to invite you to that. It's at six, six o'clock at Fox Hollow. So come on over.
Okay. Good. Appreciate that. Uh, we do have consideration for a closed executive session. I'm not sure if nine minutes is adequate.
Do it after.
Do you, do you want to wait till after?
We can try. If we don't finish, we can reconvene.
Okay.
But we can try.
We'll do that. I will, I will take a motion to go into closed-door session.
So moved.
We have to state what it's.
So move, uh, make a motion that we go into an executive session to discuss the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. We'll, uh, we'll go to a closed-door session. Uh, we will be back at seven or close to it. Don't give up on us. We'll see what we can do. Well, uh, 2018, uh, we'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance and seeing no scouts in attendance, I've, I've asked Cameron to get up and, and lead us all in, in that pledge, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cameron. Next thing on the agenda is the Roundup royalty presentation. So we are going to turn it over to that presentation. Yeah. You're on. You gotta step all the way up here and give us your names. Yeah.
My name is Caitlin Huffman and I am the Lehigh Roundup rodeo queen for 2018. I'm actually not from Lehigh. I'm from Fort Duchesne, Utah, but I have fallen in love with a little time with Lehigh. I love how you guys are still that small hometown feel in the middle of the big city. I'm from a very small town, so I feel very at home being here. Um, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the rodeo. Tickets are selling fast. So if you're planning on getting your tickets, you need to either go online to lehighrodeo.com backslash tickets, or you can get them at Macy's or Kohler's here in town. So Thursday night will be the first night of the rodeo and we will kick it off with the stop parade starting at 6:00 PM. It will go from Wyans Park and end at the rodeo ground where we will kick off the rodeo. Thursday is family night. So if you're looking to take your kids to a night, that would be it. Children from five to 11 are only $5 that night and adult tickets are $12. I want to thank the mayor and all of the committee for being, or, uh, the council for being such great supporters of the rodeo. You guys have a very strong rodeo history here and I think it's a really great community event that everyone comes out and enjoys. And I just wanted to thank everyone for all your support. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am Johnny Harvard and I am the first attendant in the Roundup royalty this year. I'm from Linden, but Lehigh's had to become the second home to be over the past year. Um, I do like Lehigh and on Friday night of the rodeo, there's not a specific theme, but tickets are $12. And she said it places that you can buy them at and then it starts at eight o'clock.
I'm Owen Patterson. I'm the second attendant for the Roundup this year. I am from West Jordan, Utah, but I've been coming to the Lehigh Roundup for over 10 years now. So I'm really excited to kick off this year. Um, Saturday night rodeo starts at 8:00 PM and tickets are $13 a piece.
Thank you, everyone, for taking time.
Thank you very much, royalty for coming. We are really excited about our Roundup week as well. Uh, the rodeo is awesome here in Lehigh. So, uh, next thing on the agenda is we, we allow 20-minute for citizen input and, uh, we just ask that it, we'll welcome any input. We just ask that if it is in regards to something that is on the agenda, if you don't mind holding until that agenda, uh, comes up, then we may be, uh, better receptive to your information. And, uh, if there is somebody here who wants to make public comment, even though it's not a public hearing agenda item, I will certainly, uh, try to make sure that you have that opportunity. Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment tonight on any general issue or general concern? Okay. Seeing none, we will go ahead and move forward. The item number four is the consent agenda and we have, uh, one thing on it. It is item 4.1, which is the approval of the May 22nd, 2018 city council meetings at minutes and the June 5th joint work session minutes. I'm assuming all the council members have had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any comments, changes, corrections or anything to those minutes? Seeing none, I will welcome a motion on, on item 4.1.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those pass. Uh, the next thing is the, uh, we have, let's see, we have a, a, a presentation on the, uh, Community Development Block Grant. And I believe Kim, you're doing that, right? Okay, Christie, sorry.
So we do have a public hearing as a part of this too. So if anybody from the public would like to speak. Um, tonight you are just approving the annual action plan, which is how the 2018 funds are to be spent in March. I believe it's on March 13th. We had a project selection. Um, you chose to spend all the funds, which are about 250,000 this year on the phase two, the second part of phase two for the downtown revitalization, which is out this way. Um, it's starting out on First No, First North and headed out east. There is a map I can show you if you want to see the exact areas, um, that was a part of the 2000, or the, the packet for March. Um, but basically it's just working on a couple more blocks of the infrastructure improvements that we've been working on for the last several years. So.
Okay.
Any questions?
It's a good thing to have, for sure.
It's nice to see some of our older sections of town get improvements, so.
It is. It's been fun.
Okay. Christie, why don't you go ahead and sit down? I'll see if there's anybody from the public who would like to make comment on the CDVG grant. Is there anyone who would? Well, that's easy. Seeing none, we'll move it back up here to the council and I will entertain, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Lehigh City's request for the proposed Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for fiscal, fiscal year 2018.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion by Chris, a second by Paul. Is, is there any questions or comments or additions to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Okay. The next item is, uh, uh, Golding Annexation and TOD Land Use Plan. This is approximately 48.78 acres of property located approximately 5,200 north, 3,000 west, uh, with proposed TLZD zoning. Uh, the petitioner is Paul Washburn. I, I do, I do believe and I do expect that there's probably several men, members in the audience tonight who may have come to listen in and participate in a discussion here. We did get your emails and those have been reviewed, so we appreciate those comments. Is the petitioner here, Paul? Please, please step forward. Hey, this is, this is for the annexation for TOD and the land use. Will you, do you want to give us some information?
Yeah, I will. Uh, maybe back up and just talk about how we got here. About a year ago, I was approached by the LDS church. They were looking for a location for a stake center. As we looked at the property, uh, we realized we were going to have some problems searing the property. It sits downhill of the existing manholes working into the Traverse Mountain area. As we started working with staff, trying to figure out how we would make that transition work, uh, we also realized this property is key to a number of other things happening for the city. It'd be a great location for a track station. Uh, we also have the Murdoch Trail that goes through this property and another property we own. And also we've, I guess, controlled part of the right of way that would be necessary to put a connection to that trail. So it goes underneath the roadway, uh, that's being proposed to connect Traverse Mountain to, uh, the freeway frontage road. Through all of that, we worked, uh, with the staff and I think we've come up with a satisfactory resolution to all of those issues. And as a part of this, we're actually going to be donating property to the city for uses the track station. the track station. At this point in time, I think what we'd like to do is be able to move forward. We have a conceptual plan of what we'd like to do with the property. Until we have worked out all of the issues with water and final elevations, what we do is with sewer, we have not been able to come up with a final plan yet, but obviously, that would go through your normal design review process. Anyway, we're anxious to have a development here in the city and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
So, Paul, so in the concept that you provided us, I think originally, before you went to Planning Commission, residential was sitting where office commercial is now closer to the track station, but the revised one shows it back. So, this is what you're comfortable with and makes sense with?
We're actually comfortable in either location, and I can make a strong argument either way. But this is what the Planning Commission directed us and felt like would work best, and we're happy to work with that.
I believe the, the map that we have in our packet shows the residential up against the current residential.
That is correct.
I imagine one of your arguments of having it switched is residential will be closer to the track stations, is that?
That's part of it, and typically, commercial buildings have a fairly limited footprint, you know, 10,000 to 20,000 feet. Parking-intensive, but very small footprint, so, you know, you can look around a building to the size. You don't seem to block views maybe as much as you might with the other. However, there is such a great difference between where the majority of the homes are and where we are. I don't know that a view is going to be a significant issue either way. We can make either one work.
What are, what would be the, the amount of stories on the commercial buildings, conceptually?
That's part of, gonna be part of our water study, to see where we can get water to go. Generally speaking, in this area, four to five stories is one kind of construction. When you go higher than that, it's a different kind of construction. I don't know that we're quite to the element for that more expensive kind of construction is warranted. At this point, land's probably cheaper than that construction would be. So, my guess is, is probably four to five stories, and I'd expect more likely four than
Any other questions?
Paul, can you, so when I've gone up there and driven around, just to re-familiarize myself with the area, right now, Traverse Mountain Boulevard stops. It's cordoned off, which is almost right there in front of where you're talking.
That is correct.
And it looks like, from where the homes are on the concept plan to where commercial would go, there's quite a slope. So, a five-story building or a four-story building isn't going to be as high compared to where Winter Haven or your homes are, because they're going to be further down the slope. So, the potential blocking someone's view or something like that may not be as prevalent? Would that be fair?
I think that's correct. I mean, there's, there is a significant difference in grade between the homes and the bottom of that pit. Clearly, we're gonna have to do some additional grading in the pit to make sure our sewer works and everything, but I still expect that there's gonna be a significant differential. Residential construction, I know we would not exceed, what we're, our plan is, is a parking garage and three stories on top of that, so in terms of height, probably about three and a half stories, which I think would fit comfortably below that ridge line.
And the further north you go, the bigger that drop-off is.
That's correct.
I saw in some of the papers, and I should have written it down, that you had an estimation from, from, I think, Google Maps as far as what that drop-off is, kind of ranging from down the stake center where it's almost nothing, up to, I think it was 100-plus feet drop-off? Is that about right?
Yeah, it goes from about 40 at the bottom to 100 is what we had estimated from Google Maps, from Google Earth.
And, and if you, so, if you're talking three and a half stories, how tall of a building is that?
Three and a half stories would be about 45 feet. Pretty, pretty low.
Okay. I guess, too, some of the residents, you know, we've had a lot concerned there, talking about only one egress in and out of that for all of those people and the commercial. Is that a problem?
Well, we have worked with Mr. Powell in terms of road design that would allow, I think we're going in with four lanes, and that would, I guess, could work as a two ways in and out. Clearly, the best way to, for a second exit is going to be on the airport road that's up, you know, the extreme north end of the property, until all of the different entities in this would be Lehigh Draper, the Point of the Mountain Commission that apparently got formed just in this last few days, and Envision Utah. There's a lot of different designs on how roadways are going to go through that area. And I think we're probably at least a few months and maybe even a year or more before we realize how that's all gonna, gonna fit together. Currently, Airport Road, as you enter out and get closer to the Freeway Frontage Road, there's a pretty dramatic hairpin turn that clearly is not the safest situation for moving traffic right now. In moving ahead with our project, our first desire was to try and accommodate the church and their construction that they would like to do. I expect if, as we start the residential portion of this project, we're probably, I'd say, a minimum of two years from occupancy, and even that would be a phased occupancy. The commercial construction, I would say, two to three years before you'd see that. Hopefully, by the time we get to that point, the other entities would, I guess, got their acts together, and we know how that entire road network is going to function. Right now, I guess we could find a way to run a second access, but it would be into the residential area, and I don't think we want to do that. We want to make it so it's directed back toward the freeway.
One of my concerns, and I think it was raised in the Planning Commission, I watched back the Planning Commission meeting, was the concern of, you know, we've got a TOD here without the mass transit to support the TOD. And so, you know, we're proposing a pretty significant amount of density, not only residential, but also, also the office space, without necessarily, well, not even, without necessarily, without the tracks stationed there to actually support that. So, from an infrastructure standpoint, it's almost, you know, kind of the cart before the horse type of situation. And I realize, you know, part of why we did these TOD overlays as a city was to, you know, potentially get UDOT and UTA to act a little bit quicker as far as bringing tracks across the Point of the Mountain. But my, my concern would be that, you know, we've put 400 residential units here, and then we, that it sits there for five, 10 years before there's the mass transit to actually support that density. Personally, I think the location for a track station, like you said, I think it actually is a good location. I live up in Traverse Mountain. It would be great to have a track station that close, but I'm not sure if it would support the residential density at this point without the tracks stationed there. That's, that's one of my concerns.
I understand that, and I think staff might be able to answer that better. My understanding at this point is, in order to entice the track station here, the city has to have the land available to it. And my understanding, I received an email from Ross earlier in the week, that they had done a conceptual layout of that station and submitted it to UDOT, and apparently had a favorable reply.
Yeah, it was actually Mike West in the Planning Division, and yeah, he, he sent them a, just a conceptual layout of how the station could work, and they're, they supported it. But yeah, there's really no definitive date or anything that we have as far as how long it'll take to actually get there, but, but they have been supportive of our planning efforts, so...
And I, and I talked to staff, because in the Planning Commission meeting, one of the things that was brought up was, you know, potentially a ordinance change that, you know, in a situation like this, you'd have a kind of a phased approach on the, on the density until the tracks, you know, is available. But with that not in place now, if we were to grant approval on something like this, then, you know, whatever density was, you know, agreed upon would be entitled to be built right away. And so, there's, you know, right now, there's no way for us to, you know, say, hey, well, you know, great, we're, we're good with whatever, you know, pick a, pick a number density-wise, but you can't build the rest of that density until the tracks is there, and that's just not a mechanism that we have at our disposal right now. So, that's one of my concerns.
And just to counter to that concern that we have, we need to put in water system to this site, and we need to put in a sewer line for the church to be able to move forward. That sewer line really needs the TOD density, the both water and sewer, to make that project economically feasible. And I understand what you're talking about with the, the track station. I've had this property on my mind to develop for some time, but very honestly, I'm moving faster than I had initially planned because of the church and because of the, I guess, the improvements on the roadway that need to go through, all the other things that we're trying to accommodate the city with.
Kim, can I, there's two questions I need to ask you just on this. I didn't catch this earlier. Item B and C, one is for the annexation, the ordinance for the annexation. Item C is the resolution for the agreement. So, would we, when it, when it gets to the point of the motion, wouldn't we take the agreement before the annexation, or would we possibly approve the annexation before?
That's just traditionally how we put those on, is the agreement after the approval of the annexation, but if you felt more comfortable approving the agreement to make sure that those terms are set in place before the annexation, I think we could reverse those.
Yeah, I mean, that's what makes sense to me.
Yeah.
But I'm just not sure, I was just curious. I don't know if we have a procedure...
No, I think that's just...
It'd be nice to have a guarantee that all, that the agreement's made first before we annex the property.
Approve the resolution, yeah, and, or I guess you could approve the, the annexation subject to approval of the agreement, or, yeah, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Okay.
I don't think the annexation's complete until it's recorded, and you're probably going to record both documents simultaneously.
Simultaneously, yeah.
Okay, the other question I had is, is, and, and I haven't been involved in many TODs. We've only seen one come through, and I don't know that, that council has seen many TODs come through either. And so, the question I have is, as I've read through the documentation, this is an annexation. We're just deciding if TOD is appropriate for this area, right? We're not getting into the details of the types of structures.
Right.
Or anything at this point. It's just that that's the question at hand, is whether or not a TOD is appropriate for this property.
Yeah, you would be annexing the property, and they're requesting that TOD zone, and as part of our, in our TOD ordinance, we require the land use plan as part of that approval of the zone. So, you would be approving the map that shows the station location and then just the general land use areas.
Broad brush.
Yeah, this is commercial, this is residential, and the density of the 400 units would be all tied to your approval of the annexation if you, if you decide that you're comfortable zoning it as a TOD. So...
Okay.
It's, it's the TOD and the land use.
Ryan, you were grabbing the microphone.
Oh, he said it, I was gonna say. Just that it sets the density, so...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were, were clear on exactly what...
And then, you know, if this did move forward, then they would proceed to development under our TOD ordinance, and they'd have to meet all of the site, you know, the pedestrian requirements and the, the layout of the buildings, and all those details would have to be met per our TOD ordinance.
Okay. Are there any more questions for Paul before I have him sit down and take public comment? Okay, Paul? Want to have a seat?
Mayor, could I?
Oh, yes.
Make one comment. One thing that Mike West isn't here, he's, he's, he's into all this TOD and, and the trail and all this. One of the things we found out is that UTA has no money to buy property. So, one of the things that really hit us hard is trying to set these locations. We haven't any, we don't have any money, nor did they, and the property gets, disappears, and we may not get a station. So, what was prompting this, some of this, was the opportunity to get property that we didn't have to buy and UTA didn't have to buy that set an opportunity for a future station.
Okay.
That was just some of what happened in the last several months.
And that's part of the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seeing, and I guess, to that point, you know, having lived in Traverse Mountain and dealt with significant, you know, deals over the course of time where density has been used as a currency, it just seems like we're potentially repeating ourselves and kind of compounding an issue that we saw back, you know, originally from the Cabela's deal that we unwound a few thousand units, but we're still, you know, have a ton of units still to be built up there and to throw another 400 on there, just, I understand Mr. Washburn's, you know, need to have this pencil out economically, but it just seems, seems excessive to me. And it's the, you know, city using density as a currency, essentially.
I am, I am opening the microphone to any who would like to make public comment. We do, I don't like time limits, but we have a very long agenda tonight if anybody saw the agenda.
Mark, Mark makes that qualification as soon as I come up.
Yeah, I see, I, I seen Rob stand up. Actually, Rob, you know that's not true.
We're gonna, we're gonna put a 30-second timer on Rob, and everyone else can have as much time as they need.
We have a timer, I don't want to use it, but yeah, if you can limit your comments, I think the most important points can be made within three minutes.
Agreed, so... My name is Rob Ludlow, longtime resident of Traverse Mountain and, and proponent of responsible growth. And I just, you know, it's interesting, as Lauren was talking about, using dens, we don't have money for land, and what, we want something. It was deja vu back to the Cabela's deal, and, and we're using density as a currency. And there's definitely a time and a place to do that, but we need to be very thoughtful when we, when we do that. And I'm not sure that we've quite, quite hit that, that threshold of being thoughtful. As I look at the deal, I certainly love tracks and love bringing light rail closer to, to residents. I think that that's a huge win for, for residents. I love the, the stake center there. I think we can figure out a right way to blend high-density and business. So, there are a lot of great elements to the deal, but I would just say that 400 units is awfully high. You know, why, why not 300? You know, and, and what, what is it that needs to happen? And if the church needs to pay more money in order to make sewer work for the church, then maybe they need to pay a little bit more money. But we shouldn't necessarily have this deal penciled on the back of residents using density yet again. I think Traverse Mountain is, we've paid our dues to the city, and we've, we've, we've borne the, the cost, and, and we're kind of doing this again. I would just say, you know, we should stop and, and really be carefully, carefully evaluate and be thoughtful about whether or not 400 is the right number. I don't believe it is. I think the right number's 300, and so we should be thoughtful about it. Second thing is, secondary egress is critical. And so, my suggestion is a compromise would be, you know, to require a secondary egress to go beyond 50 units. So, if they've got two years before they, all of the powers that be figure out the road situation, great, I get it. But don't put more than 50 units in a high, high-density area where you're bringing, funneling in people with business, funneling in people with high-density, potentially funneling in people with, with tracks eventually, and not have a game plan for a secondary egress. I'm sorry, but tracks is not an adequate secondary egress, and people are not going to be walking down the, down, down the, the rail trail to get out of there if there's a disaster. And just doubling up on, on the size of the road is inadequate and unacceptable. So, it's, it's a, it's a non-starter to, to argue that there should be no secondary egress. That's, that's gotta be a bare minimum in order to prove that this evening. The second thing is, the third thing is, is open space. So, there really is no open space here in this, but you, but they're putting it right across the street from a Traverse Mountain park. And, and so what will happen is, the 400 residents, or 300, will come and use, use parks. And we all know that Traverse Mountain is actually under the city's limit for active open space and parks. We had to gerrymander in Olympic Park in order to make all the numbers penciled to meet the, the master planning ordinance and, you know, meet the minimum open space requirements for our current ordinance here in Lehigh. So, adding in 400 additional residents and adding in zero additional usable active open space for those residents. So, my, my recommendation is to take the park impact fees generated by these units and dedicate them to, at an 85% level, to the parks in Traverse Mountain, so that we can kind of accelerate the growth of Traverse Mountain parks, which have been, are, to be frank, fairly slow in, in, in coming for, for many reasons that we all know. And then, lastly, we need to figure out a way to limit the nightlife. So, it's great, it's great that we're talking about bringing in restaurants, and there are places near the outlets and other places that would be more suitable for, you know, you know, late, late, late business and, and late restaurants and, and lots of noise. But when we're kind of, kind of embed this deep within our community, I think the, the feedback from residents is, is we need to put a damper on the nightlife. So, those are, those are the four, four requests.
May I ask a question of him, just, just to clarify?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, you can.
It's not, you don't want... I just want to make sure I heard you right. Right now, Traverse Mountain, Mountain Association already gets 80 or 85% of all park impact fees.
Incorrect. So, the, this, Traverse Mountain as a master plan community...
No, no, let me, let me rephrase what I said, because I, I think I know why you said incorrect. We, as a city, though, are obligated to use 80 or 85% We as a city, though, are obligated to use 80 or 85% of the park impact fees that are collected from homes built in Traverse Mountain towards Traverse Mountain parks.
Towards Lehigh City parks within Traverse Mountain, correct.
You're asking us to take a subdivision that has nothing to do with the TMMA and dedicate 85% of their impact fee to go towards, when there's no concept planned to show that there is or is not any open space or park space at all yet?
So the TOD actually has, basically has its own concept of open space, but you're putting this development literally immediately across the street from the Shadow Ridge Park in Traverse Mountain. So where do you think?
And is that a public park, though?
It is a public park. I'm just simply saying that we don't have the financing for that public park, and so we're gonna phase it. And so.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You're asking us to actually withhold a high percentage of park impact fees from another subdivision that does not fit under your umbrella of TMMA to help fund city parks in your subdivision and not go to any other park in the city of Lehigh, correct?
Incorrect. What I'm asking for is 85%, which is the mix, there's 15% of the population in Lehigh is in Traverse Mountain in that area. So that's why the 15% goes to the general community. We are way behind on parks. And the reason why I'm asking for it is, this is right across the street from the Shadow Ridge Park, which hasn't been built because there hasn't been adequate funds. And we're phasing it so that we can build up adequate funds. So it seems to me we're generating park impact fees to people who are gonna want to use a park that hasn't yet been built because you don't have the funds. Well, the right thing to do would be to take 85% of those fees and actually build the park so that they can, so that everyone can use it. So we, you know, for lots of reasons, I'm happy to spend that, talk about that in another time. You know, we are behind the curve in terms of park development. I'm simply saying, if you want to use density as a currency again, and essentially have us bear the brunt of that density, then please, take the park impact fees and apply the same formula that, you know, we worked out with Mark Johnson and others previously, and use that to accelerate the parks immediately across the street from this planned TOD. I think that that's a fair request.
Thanks, Rob.
Can I just ask a question, not of Rob, but related to what Rob said. So Rob suggested kind of that 50-unit threshold before a second egress is required. I know we had a similar situation, I believe, up Central Canyon. Was that also 50 units, or was it 150 units that required the second egress?
We actually had a wider road for, we've done this several times at Traverse Mountain. We actually built a wider road, so two roads, so it actually is two roads in one. Actually, all of Traverse Mountain had 600 units off a single access when it was built.
But one of them recently that we approved.
It had a, it was up the canyon, and I think we had the same issue.
Yeah, Central Canyon.
Central Canyon.
It has a lot wider cross section than what would have ever normally been needed for the number of units in that area. So, yeah, we've built two roads just put together. I guess the theory behind it.
Basically, two lanes count as two.
We separated them, so they're, so one could be, have an accident or a problem or whatever, and you could still have the other one.
Gotcha. So divide.
That was the intent.
Okay. Thanks.
More public comment.
Hi, my name is David Baum. I'm a Traverse Mountain resident. I'm gonna lean on this because I have a knee injury, so excuse me for that. I'm actually really frustrated by this plan. And I know you all received my email, I'm sure, outlining many of the reasons. But I know I speak for all of my neighbors and all of my, all the residents that live right by where this development's planning, saying that we didn't even catch wind of this until probably a few weeks ago. I mean, it's been, what, I think the initial vote was in December. We didn't even have an idea about this, and we feel like we've been out of the loop. That's a huge concern because we're the residents that this will impact the most. And I feel, I feel like this, these changes that are being made, for lack of better phrasing, are kind of gonna ruin the area for everyone. The reason I say that is because a lot of these changes, they're going to fundamentally change the way the area is. Right now, it's a very quiet area. It's a very nice area. As soon as you bring in such high-density housing, everyone's absolutely right. It's gonna be a mess. It's gonna be an absolute mess. And we're gonna look back on and think, say, what were we thinking? I think that they're right. Without the second egress, there's no way, there's no way there's gonna be any sort of reasonable traffic situation around there. And that's right by our homes. My property actually borders, it's on the fence line, right where this area is. Right now, there's a beautiful flight park right there. I wonder if that's been taken into consideration at all. We've seen some of the parasailers, because right now there's currently construction going on to remove parts of the mountain. We've seen them crash, almost crashing into some of the construction equipment out there, some of the big trucks. It's not a safe area right now as things are with some of the construction. And now we're adding all these additional things. I think that needs to be reconsidered. Another consideration, I actually am against the track station. I don't think it's a very good idea. And I'd actually like to read to you from Google a review on the Draper Town Center track station. This is on there. You can open it up and read with me if you want right now. This review is from a year ago. One star. Late at night, there's always drug paraphernalia scattered about the train. Trastron everywhere, bloody tissues and used needles. The train operators at times can be pleasant, but often seem rushed and are not observant. That's a huge concern for me. I don't have kids yet, but I plan to have kids by the time this track station will be operating. There's an elementary school very close to where this track station is proposed. And in a community where there's so many houses around, most kids walk to school. Is that really something that's responsible to put so close up to an elementary school? I would hope that if a track station is to be put in this area, it is pushed as far, as far away from the homes as possible, as close to the freeway. Yes, there's a lot of transit over in that area, and that's fine, that's acceptable. But I think that there's a serious concern for not only that, but this will bring a homeless presence to the area. I mean, that's a concern for children as well. I hope that that's been taken into consideration. I fear that it hasn't been. Let me think, what else? Yeah, along with that, the noise. So the noise that a track station brings, many of you are probably familiar that the two main causes of significant noise from a track station is if there's a significant curve and if there's a station. We have both of those in this area. We have a significant curve wrapping around the point of the mountain. That's a huge concern. From 6:00 AM to midnight, a track station right up against property lines, causing noise both from the curve and from stopping and going, the nightlife. These are huge concerns that I don't think are appropriate. I think that for all these reasons, this is going to fundamentally ruin this area for the current residents. I really, I think that, our friend Paul here, nice guy, seems like a great guy. I'll buy you an ice cream cone after the, after the meeting. But honestly, I hope you don't take his rebuttals and his statements at face value. Putting in properties that are 50 feet high, that's pretty high. I go, I live, I see the, I see this site every single day from my back window. There's not that much of a grading there. I mean, there's just, the highway is about as low as it goes, and that's not that lower than my fence line. I don't believe that five-story-high building is not gonna have an impact on residents' quality of life, residents' view of, you know, we currently, currently we have the Traverse Mountain Master Association, and they charge high dues, and they do apply that to certain things around the community. But absolutely right, you know, to think that the parks aren't gonna be impacted, to think that all the many things that Traverse Mountain residents are currently and already have paid for are not gonna be impacted, it's just irresponsible. I think there are far, far, far too many questions surrounding this whole situation to, for each of you to responsibly vote to move ahead with this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle Humphrey, I'm resident of Traverse Mountain Winter Haven. I'll be extremely brief. I appreciate your time that you're taking to listen to this. I agree with much of, all of the things that Rob Ludlow brought forth, so I don't want to repeat myself on that, other than to say that everything that he brought forward are concerns of the majority of the residents that border this development. I do want to emphasize the fact that, as we went and talked to the community, we have papers that have over 100 residents that signed this petition, saying, hey, we'd like the city council to reevaluate this, and maybe not approve it at this time, as it goes back to the planning commission for more concrete details. That being said, as we went around and talked to the community, the vast majority of the people we talked to are for smart development in Traverse Mountain. The vast majority of people, contrary to what the former resident, and I appreciate his opinions, are okay with this track station. It's a great idea to have tracks. It's a great idea to help incorporate some different residential and commercial areas, and especially the churches is well-needed. As long as it's done smart. Unfortunately, we don't feel that this proposal, as it stands at the moment, is smart because it hasn't been evaluated out to the end. As we mentioned, for example, with UTA, I know that we mentioned that UTA doesn't have money to buy land. To the contrary, UTA doesn't have money to complete the projects they're currently working on. I guarantee you, Mountain View Corridor and many projects in Salt Lake will be addressed before they even look twice at Lehigh with a track station. That's a lot of infrastructure they're gonna have to put in place and a lot of money that they don't have. So while I appreciate a track station being there, I don't foresee it being there for a long time, maybe not even while I'm there. We're gonna be left with high-density residential and commercial areas without the infrastructure, as Mr. Hancock mentioned, to support that kind of transit. With that being said, our biggest concern, I think, with the majority of the residents is the health, safety and general welfare of the community with this plan as it stands now. Adding 400 units and 200,000 square feet of commercial real estate without the necessary infrastructure, not only a track station, but enough parking, enough open space, and enough of a solid plan on when is the second egress going to happen, when is the track station gonna be put in place, and what is this, the buffer between the current residential area and new development's going to be. I work in the tech industry, and when a developer tells me this is going to happen soon, I can guarantee that it's almost likely not going to happen. Until I have a concrete date and a concrete timeframe that sets these limitations that have been mentioned before, I would say we need to reevaluate this development plan. And I'd like to see, and almost everyone that's bordering this property would like to see much more concrete detail, so we can ensure that our health, safety and general welfare, the health, safety and general welfare of those that'll be working and living in that area, that we want to have, as long as it's smart, can all be protected. One last thing, adding 400 residential units in that area, I know we've discussed this a lot. Every single time we have a new development come to Traverse Mountain as a proposal, I feel like we, as a community, have to come and fight and fight to lower the density to what it needs to be at. I love that we want to have as many people as we can live in Lehigh. It's a great place. We don't want it to turn into Los Angeles. And that's what I'm afraid this is gonna look like, with stacking so many people and buildings together. Lastly, on that note, our schools right now, we have one school that's already in operation, a second one that'll open soon, that are already at capacity. If we have 400 high-density units there, that'll have many young children, we would also like to see a plan in place of how are we gonna have these kids go to school. And that's been a long-going, an ongoing topic of debate with other developments that are close by as well. In closing, I would just like to say, I really appreciate the developer. I think that he has been more than willing to talk with the community and work with the community. I understand his hesitation in moving forward this development as well. I believe that he also feels the same way, that this needs to be reevaluated so the health, safety and general welfare of the current population and future people that will live there is adequately addressed before we move forward with the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Yubertie. I'm a Winter Haven resident there in Traverse Mountain. And my property also is directly connected to the property in question. Our backyard looks into the field. And I lived there for 10 years. And my family's extremely enjoyed that property and looking into that field and having open space. We love the flight park and the hanggliders that we can see from our house. We love the wildlife in the winter. There's deer and elk that winter in that field. And we've just really loved that spot. And when they build this, or develop this property, that's all gonna go away. And it's gonna go away forever. I've been out knocking doors with some of our other members here of our neighborhood. And I'd say 90% of the people had no clue that we, when we knocked on the door, that anything was happening behind their field. Even there was a lady that moved in just two weeks ago, and she said, she asked her realtor and she asked the city if they were able to build it in that field. And they said no, because it was zoned agricultural. And so I feel like just, the message hasn't got out to any of our neighbors yet. And we've only been able to contact a small number of them. I know that letters were sent out and the signs were posted, but most people still, I don't understand or didn't, the letters were kind of vague to what was happening, especially to the extent that they were planning to build the high density. I have children that go to the Traverse Mountain Elementary from the very beginning of the first year. And it's been overpopulated for the last seven years. And then we finally build a new school to where its numbers are back down to normal, and we're gonna automatically build a high-density zone. They're all gonna be going to that school, and it's gonna be back to being overpopulated. And as far as the track station goes, most of the members, the neighbors I've talked to, didn't agree with having a track station and had major concerns, especially with the amount of crime that we've seen. Seems like every summer, we run into high numbers of burglaries in our neighborhood and break-ins. And it's hard, it seems like it's been hard for the police to be up there all the time. And we feel like the track station's gonna bring more, more crime in the neighborhood. For all these reasons, I'm opposed to the development. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
My dad used to be the one always sitting back here, so I understand you guys want to go home. So I'll go as fast as I can. But I do just want to.
What's your name?
Oh, sorry, Lori Lamar. I just want to add my voice. I agree with many of the things that have been said by both Kyle and Rob. But two years ago, we bought our house. We're up at the top of Winter Haven. So I was here a couple of years ago for the mine, right? And I understand, that has to happen. We live in a city that has progress, and things need to happen. But I feel like 100, you know, 300 yards this way and 300 yards this way, the home I thought I was buying is kind of being surrounded. The mine, I get it, I'm like, okay, we can do this. It's only a couple of years. I can do that. But then to say, okay, now, now this is coming up on the other side, I am concerned about the density. Because when we passed, when it was passed to have the agreement to have that mine open up, they said, it doesn't make sense to have this many high-density units. And so all of these reasons is said, you guys said, hey, it doesn't make sense. So for me to say, wait, it makes sense 300 yards the other direction, that's kind of hard for me to understand. I do appreciate the moving of the residential rather than the commercial right there. So if we are doing that, I am grateful for that. So thank you. But I just would like to maybe add my voice to that, that concern of the high density and what it looks like as far as the traffic. I wish school were still in session so you guys could come, so you could drive from Winter Haven down past the elementary school, because that's the only way to get out. So driving out of our neighborhood, you've got buses stopping. Sometimes, I mean, I would pass four buses on the way out. So that's a lot of students. And if you have a bunch of people working right there, and that's our only egress, we're gonna have another, like SR 92 and the mess that's over by Thanksgiving Point. I feel like that's what it's gonna look like until we get another egress, if we've got commercial buildings there. So I would just like to throw that in there. And thank you so much.
Thank you. And just to clarify, and we're not in a hurry to get home. We just have a very long agenda, and we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity tonight to have their item heard. Okay, I'll take one more, two more comments. We need to move forward.
My name's Adam Del Toro. I also live in Winter Haven. Kind of live at the bottom, the lower end of Fox Holloway, where my backyard is right up against this area that's being proposed to be annexed. You know, I realize they're planning to build a church there. We talked about height. And fortunately, being at the lower end, there's not very much grade there. And even at the higher end, I'm still very doubtful, regardless of what's been said tonight, that we'd have any guarantees that, you know, people's views wouldn't be obstructed. And I'm obviously very concerned about my own backyard as well, you know, and the view that I have. You know, if this TOD were approved, you know, definitely 400 units is excessive. I definitely agree with everything else that's been said about those comments regarding that. You know, just the increase of traffic and possibly transients, you know, we've had our issues with that over the years. And, you know, this, we're really concerned about, and the property value loss that would be experienced. be experienced. You know, I just feel like also, just to echo Rob's comments, you know, I feel like we are definitely trading, you know, the high-density housing, you know, for the free land, and it's concerning. I feel like that's the wrong approach. And, you know, definitely don't think UDOT has the money for this. I think it's very likely that if this were approved, we're going to get the high-density housing, and that's going to sit there for a long time. And we may never see the track station, maybe five, 10 years, who knows? So it's definitely the cart before the horse. So I hope you reconsider this and realize that, you know, every person I've been talking to and going door-to-door about this, they're just as concerned. And we don't feel like this is a good plan to move forward with. Or for good planning, I don't feel like this is a good plan, so. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for listening to us. My name's Jake Lamar. Just want to re-echo some of the comments that were made previously. I'll try to make my comments brief. Agree with Rob, with Kyle, with Lori. You know, one of the nice things about our neighborhood is it's a very quiet community. Kids are often leaving bikes in our front yard and scooters in our front yard. I just have some concerns about the high-density housing as well. I think speaking with a lot of the neighborhood, I don't think there's many concerns about developing the area. We all understand that that's going to move forward, and we're in favor of that. But we just want to make sure that we take the right steps and precautions to make sure that our community is protected and that we don't fundamentally change what our community has to offer to each of our residents. So I think exactly what Kyle said is maybe taking a step back and evaluating this plan and making the smart moves to develop this where everybody can come out with a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring it back up here. Paul, you're allowed to come back up the microphone if you have any response to comments.
Just a couple of brief ones. I realize this is an emotional issue. You hear 400 units, and it sounds like an awful lot. The units we're intending on building are two-bedroom apartments, primarily one-and-two-bedroom apartments. We've done a number of projects over the last few years. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Northgate project on 8th North in Orem, where the Wincos store is. If you've looked at that project, kind of a Tuscan project, we've got 65 acres there, of which 30 of it is purely commercial. We also have almost 800 units on site. It's not crowded. We don't have a crime problem. Actually, the property values there have held up very, very well. But at any rate, I don't know that we're going to have an impact on the schools the way it's maybe being portrayed. The other element that I'm a little concerned about is the concern about a lack of planning. Your staff, your planning commission, and yourselves have put a lot of time into deciding how to develop the TOD zone. It's not an easy zone. There's a lot of safeguards in that zone that have to be met for a project to move forward. And I guess either you trust your own judgment or not, but I think you've got the safeguards that are there. In terms of this being strictly a density for land trade, I don't know that I believe that either. We didn't decide to invent that there would be a track station, or this would be a good location for it. Track stations are going to locate where the tracks are. They're not going to move the tracks next to the freeway to accommodate a neighborhood or anything else. It's going to go in that long-established right-of-way that exists. And as we have looked at it, and I know a staff has looked at it, this is a place where you can locate a track station that's next to a major collector's street, the boulevard there. I know the majority of our traffic would go that direction. I don't see a good reason for them to go elsewhere in the neighborhood. There's just no reason to be there, other than maybe go to church. Last of all, a concern about nightlife. I don't see that hillside as being much of a place for a major nightlife. Obviously, there's going to be support, commercial there, the things that will help support the businesses. Probably a non-gas station, but a convenience store that would allow residents and people that are going to work there, you know, to get a drink, because they're either getting on and off the train, other items. But as far as this being an intense commercial area or nightclubs or anything else, I think that's pretty well stretching it. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. This might be a question for Kim, and I'm only asking because I know I prefaced the comments, my comments earlier tonight about this just being an annexation about a TOD location. But I'm curious, now that the question came up from Chris and the interchange with Rob about park space, what does our TOD zone demand of park space in a development?
So there is a 10% open space requirement, and it doesn't specify it can either be public or private. You just have to have 10% of that TOD area devoted to some form of open space. And because TODs are a little more of an urban style of development, it could be a plaza. It doesn't necessarily have to be grass, you know, traditional park. It could be plaza space within the high-density area, for example, where a common area where people can gather. But it could be, yeah, hardscape or grass.
Do sidewalks through the development count towards that?
Not just the sidewalk alone. I mean, if it was a sidewalk within a plaza, then yeah, we would count the plaza area. But yeah, just sidewalks for the sake of a sidewalk along the road, no.
Okay.
Sometime.
They could count landscape buffers, yeah, if they had a large area of landscaping along the back to buffer these existing homes.
Open space is not always defined like a lot of people think it is. I mean, common space, open space is basically common space, generally speaking. Sometimes that might include driveways, you know, kind of driveways that are managed and plowed by the HOA Association. In this circumstance, would that also mean that things like driveways in any common space could be counted as open space?
No, no, it would need to be more of an amenitized space. And we've been looking at a lot of different examples, from, you know, East Coast to, you know, Portland and those areas. And sometimes you'll find that they may even have rooftop areas, a pool that's on the top floor of an apartment building, or, you know, within the commercial area. It could be, yeah, a splash pad or something that's available for the residents in that development to use. But yeah, we would not include driveways that are more just for transportation use. I get what you're asking.
But the code is clear on that, because I've...
And I can, yeah, I can pull the code up, and I can read you the, there's a paragraph in there that talks about the open space. And I can, I guess, cite the language if you want to hear that.
It's okay. I just want to make sure that's, you know, their attention is, the proper attention is given.
Yeah, and I guess I would say too, that you have the ultimate discretion. If this moved forward and you zoned it as a TOD, and they came in for their development, we still have a lot of control over what gets approved or what doesn't as they go through their layout. You know, if they're trying to count that towards their open space, we can just say, no, that, in our opinion, is not open space. You just don't approve it the way that, you know, if they were proposing the driveways to count.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks, Paul. I appreciate the comments we're here tonight. Let's bring it back up here for discussion on the council. Let me just ask you first, you have items B and C, and I questioned whether or not we should have the agreement motion first, which is item C. Does, I don't, that's up to the council. I don't know that I care one way or another. It just seems a logical way to do it. Any comment, question on that?
One can't be approved without the other being approved, right? They both have to be approved or not approved.
The only reason I bring it in, you could approve B and C. There might be some questions on the annexation agreement. It might be tabled or something. To me, it just makes sense to approve the agreement first, because you'd want to have that in place, I think, before you continue with the agreement. That's just my thought, or the annexation, sorry. Okay.
I'll voice a couple of concerns I have, or questions, I guess. I do appreciate what the last gentleman said about the fact that this property will eventually develop. It was mentioned by a few residents that they enjoy the open field and we all, as we all do. For those of us who have lived and were raised in Lehigh, that agricultural field changed a long time ago. However, you know, with, we knew that was going to come. The secret got out, and now we're all here. I don't live where I grew up. My family, we built the house, and so we're part of that growth. But eventually, it will develop. What it will develop into, that's the question. A couple of my concerns with this particular proposal is, of course, it's been mentioned many times, single egress. And, you know, there's, I honestly don't see another way that they can create a second egress unless they extend that road all the way down to the Frontage Road or Flight Park Road. And again, there's a lot of unanswered questions there. It was talked about and discussed that density is being used as a currency here. And Rob mentioned, sometimes it does make sense. We wouldn't have Pioneer Crossing today if we, if the city didn't use density bonuses to get that 106 feet of right-of-way, right, for Pioneer Crossing. That is, to me, a very essential tool that we used, and it made a lot of sense. This particular one, maybe it doesn't make as much sense. And the challenge that I have also is, and Paul brought this up, was the church really needs this building here, but to make it paper, make it sense on paper, they need this high-density. I don't know if that's necessarily our, as a city, I guess, our problem or our solution to come up with. And I understand we need tracks locations, and maybe there are some benefits in the long run. But again, we don't know when tracks is going to come. So those are a couple of my concerns. I just feel, I feel this is about five to 10 years too soon. Maybe if Traverse Mountain Boulevard connected down to the Frontage Road at this time, maybe, you know, there were some of these other issues. We knew when tracks was coming. We knew that there was another road going to be there. It could make more sense. That's kind of what my feelings are.
And Traverse Mountain Boulevard should be connecting to the Frontage Road. I mean, that's, that's within our purview, and that's going to happen sooner rather than later. My concern is around the timing to when tracks is going to come in. And that's where, when I listened back to the planning commission, and Mike mentioned, you know, the possibility of doing an ordinance change where the density would be phased in based on when the tracks comes. If that was a mechanism that we had available to us now, where we said, okay, look, instead of 400 units, let's do 300 units, but you can only build half of it until the tracks is there, I'd feel much more comfortable about this, having that mechanism in place that, but if we approve it, as has already been said, the annexation with the TOD zone, essentially the density, whatever density we approve, whether it be 300 or 400, comes along with it, and they can build it whenever they can build it. So that's honestly one of my biggest concerns, because I think the tracks, I know some, not everyone agrees, but I think it's a, it's a great location for the tracks, living there. I have a niece that actually lives at the top of Chestnut Street. So, I mean, I have family that's going to be impacted by this, so I'm, you know, fairly cognizant of that. And I, you know, I think the tracks location is a good location. I think it's far enough away from residences that I don't think the noise is going to be a big concern, especially with the buffer of the commercial and the residential. But that being said, I just have concerns about the, one, the amount of density, as well as the timing of when the density would be built without the tracks to support it.
So I guess I'm confused, because I didn't think, even though that the applicant has offered a number for density, that this, if this was approved, that we're actually approving density with it. Am I missing something?
And Kim, didn't you mention that that was, we are approving?
It's in the agreement.
The 400 is?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, I guess.
I think that...
Number six on the agreement. Sorry, it's number six on the agreement.
I think it's either too early or too late. This is the sort of thing that you like to designate before there are people that are going to be hugely impacted by it. That boat sailed a long time ago, so we have to consider that the residents that live around there would, to some extent, be bearing the burden for something that could potentially benefit a much larger community. And that's part of what comes with being part of a community. But I would agree that we haven't hammered out enough of the details for me to be comfortable with this yet. I think maybe the density is too high. I think I'd like to see more assurances as far as building height, especially with the commercial. Councilman Reverend's points well taken, that, and I've had a lot of letters from residents that say, Lehigh City shouldn't be building this development. Well, we're not building this development, but we do have some control over what happens there. That said, we can't always do what we want with land we don't own. And the developer has a right to develop, but I would like to put as many mechanisms in place as possible to protect both this community and the area at large. And I don't see enough to be comfortable with yet.
Let me just say too, I do like, as Paul mentioned, the tracks, that opportunity for that to come through, but I do feel like the density is too high. And that's an impact on these, on these people living there. And I do also feel like they, because they're there, should be able to have a little say in what's going to happen and what's going to carry on with that. And that's kind of where my feelings are, is that in those areas, I can see some good things there, but I also see some impact on the residents that are living there.
I, you know, we always have a delicate balance on the council. As elected officials, we take an oath that say we will protect the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Utah. And property rights, as many of you know, is a very important part of our US Constitution. And so people who own property do have the right to develop. State statute many, many years ago allows us to help plan and designate and zone properties to what we feel is an appropriate fit for our communities. And that's this process, and it's a difficult process. But we have to do it in a manner that doesn't restrict the property owner, property owner's rights in any way. So we're aware of that. It is not an easy decision to make, but I appreciate the comments from the council tonight. And I would, I would like to hear a motion, if I could, on item C first, to know if anybody would like to accept the agreement, which is the Resolution 201834.
Mayor, I have one more question, real quick. And Kim, maybe you could tell us, what's the surrounding area? What is it zoned right now?
And I can come up and bring it up on a map if you want, but...
It's okay.
The neighborhood that all of these residents have spoken tonight, they live in a planned community zone. That's what Traverse Mountain is zoned. The area, this property isn't zoned because it's still in the county. I did check, the current zoning in Utah County is mining and grazing. So it's kind of a mining and agricultural zone. The property to the south is just transitional holding. It's part of this area that we designated as a TOD, because that's, in fact, that was originally where we had a very, a much more higher density, 2,500-unit proposal several years ago. And then a lot of that land, as you go south down towards Adobe, is business park, so professional office.
And the reason why I ask, in the Winter Haven, what is that per units, units per acre?
I think Winter Haven, the density, they're 5,000 square foot, 6,000 square foot lots. Some of them are a little bit larger. But I would say your density is probably in the six to maybe eight units per acre, probably six or seven units per acre.
Okay. So if we were to say, Mr. Washburn came back and said, you know what, I just want the same density as the neighbors, they would get approximately, on 48 acres, you'd get approximately 288 units. So that's, you know, just kind of a heads up to the residents there. That's what could happen, and that property right, that property owner would have the rights, you know, and a pretty good argument to have that, would be about, you know, 250 to 280 units.
Which is a contrast to the 400 that were requested.
Correct.
Puts that in perspective.
Yeah, and the commercial. Again, it still seems like a lot of homes right there, so.
Once again, I, I'll entertain a motion if anybody would like to construct one on item C.
Guess I'll make a motion that we deny Resolution 2018-34 approving the, or not approving the Golding Anexation Agreement at this time.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Do we need any findings of fact as to?
We don't, do we? Well, if anyone has suggestions on findings of fact.
I'd suggest that there's, I'll, I'll take a stab at making a few suggestions and you can entertain.
This is one of those purely discretionary legislative decisions. So, you know, elaborate, detailed findings of fact aren't necessary, but at least the reasonably debatable standard. So whatever support you have for it is always helpful.
So I'd say the lack of a second egress, that would be one. The timing of when the tracks, the, the mass transit would be there to support the requested density as a second. That the density requested is in excess, like it's, it's too big of a difference. I don't know how to phrase that right, but it's, it's too big, too big of a jump density wise from the existing residential neighborhood to what is being requested as far as the units per acre. Those are, those are the three that, that I have the biggest concern over.
So with those, unless anyone else wants to give suggestions, but I would agree to two of them. I would not want to include the track station. I, I think that we see all the time that transportation comes always after the growth. It's, has to do with the money, it has to do with all sorts of things. There's too many moving parts with transportation. We're dealing with that right now in Lehigh with I-15. So my motion would stand with reason number one and reason number three that Council, Councilor Hancock stated, but not inclusive of number two regarding the track station.
Okay. Have you got that, Tisha?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I have.
I was going to say something, I'm good.
Is it to add to the motion?
No.
Actually, so I guess the proper procedure here is, we do have a motion on the table. Do we have a second on this motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion by Chris and a second by Paul. Now is the time for any questions on the motion. Do you have a question? Okay. Anybody else have a question?
Is there anything from this point? Because again, for me, I, I, I think this is, I mean, we, we approved it as a TOD overlay. I still think it's a good location. Is there anything that, you know, as part of this motion, we can direct staff to, as far as, you know, ways to move forward? Or does that need to be incorporated at all? If not, if not, my second will still stand even if nothing's added.
I think that, I think that the motion is sufficient. I think that both staff and the developer can probably
Piece it together.
Piece it together from the comments.
Kind of see where we're at.
Let's, let's see where the vote ends up first. So this is, this is Resolution 201834. I have a motion. I have a second. Johnny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Thought you were going to vote against your own motion there.
You can only vote against, you can only vote against your seconds, Chris.
Okay. The, the motion for the agreement has failed. Item B is the ordinance for the annexation. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to move forward with the annexation without the agreement attached to it, council.
I think the problem is, is that your agreement deals with issues regarding water and, and some other things that I don't think you'd want to just annex property without having some of those provisions nailed, nailed down.
I think that's why I wanted to have a vote on item C first. So I will, I will entertain a motion on item B.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we deny ordinance 52-2018 that is pertaining to the Golding Anexation.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Johnny, a second by Mike. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, I'll move forward. This is an ordinance. This is also roll call. Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Johnny?
Yes.
Okay, that also, that denial is also unanimous. Thank you. You're, you're free to continue to work with staff and see what other alternatives we might be able to come with on this project. Next item on the, on the agenda is item number seven. This is consideration of ordinance 51-2018, amending the Lehigh City General Plan and General Plan Land Use Map for Sherry Spurle. Sherry, are you here?
I'm not Sherry.
You're not Sherry? I was gonna, I, I'm looking at that, I'm like, did I mispronounce that? Because I blew the last name.
It's like a boy name, it's like a boy name too.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to step up to the microphone and, and tell us what your application is about?
Yes, sir. My name is Dan Ford, and I represent Sherry. We originally came with a request to change the master plan. Subsequent to our meeting with the Planning Commission, we've met with residents. We've sent out a letter to residents. We've actually even gotten a petition signed with residents. Here's, here's what the, here's kind of the situation with the building. This is the building that's directly behind the post office. It was the one that burned down that was rebuilt. You know, from some discussions with people on city staff, it was erected in the 60s, and it's been used as an office building of sorts for a really long time. When, when I came, I was invited to help lease out the property, and I was given some stipulations that it had to be medical related uses. It, we've had a, right, we currently have a dentist that's going to be going in there. It's going to take two thirds of the building. We've had quite a bit of interest from other types of tenants, insurance agents. Yeah, I just showed it today to a therapist. You know, there's been a number of different types of users that have come and tried to meet with us. When we talked to staff, this is, this is a while ago. We talked to them and said, hey, is there some kind of a use that we could do that would not just restrict us to the medical related practices? So an insurance agent, an attorney, an accountant, something along those lines. And they said, well, no, part of the stipulation of this property being rebuilt was that it remained medical related. We came to the Planning Commission, we talked about, you know, one of the ways of changing that would be changing it to community commercial. When we came and talked with the, when we came and spoke with the Planning Commission, we had a number of different residents come and voice some concerns, and primarily their concerns were regarding, you know, what type of user would be in there? You know, a retail user and different types of users that would be incompatible with what they wanted in the neighborhood, as well as maybe what was done historically. So what we did is we came away from the meeting and talked with the neighbors. We talked with them afterwards about what are the uses that they would consider to be compatible? And, and so we, we'd gone through and went through what was in the neighborhood commercial zone. And because and, and what would be considered a valid appropriate use? And, and, and we'd sent them out a letter with some of the concerns that they had, and then went through and knocked door to door. We went, we went four different times to talk to them. And, and, and the people in green are the people that were, that were okay with us using these different uses. So, so what we did is we talked to them, and basically if we can use it for professional office in general. Also, in tandem with that discussion that we've tried to reach out with the residents, we spoke with the city attorney, I spoke with the planning director and different people on planning. And when I spoke with them about what, why it was defined as medical use, as they said, that was the existing use. We went back to the owners and said, okay, so who's been in that building since it's been there in the 60s? And prior to the last two dentists, there was a computer company. There's been a travel agent, there's been, sorry, go get my glasses. There's been a landscaper, there's been a photographer, and a bunch of different people. So what we're asking is not for a zone change or a general plan amendment. We're okay not doing that. We've talked to the residents about not doing that change. But just opening the, the definition of what has been historically allowed to be along those, those lines of just a professional office building. And I don't know what would need to be done as we've talked with staff. I'm not sure what direction it has. So part of my request would be either, you know, if there's a way that you know of already that can allow for it, or to direct staff to look at that type of thing, whether it's, whether it's just saying, hey, this is a grandfathered use of professional office, or if there has to be some kind of master development agreement. I'd hate to have to go through that whole process. But if there's, if there's something to look at along those way, lines, we're not changing the zoning isn't. We just wanted to be able to, you know, not have a problem if I talk to an insurance agent and put them in that building.
Ken, I, I just need to ask a question after hearing your discussion here because the, the item that's before us tonight is, is a change to the general plan. But you're saying you don't want a change to the general plan.
If we can just use these
So you wanted denial on that and then?
Or table or direct staff to look at what to do? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what to do here either.
So you have one option that, and this was a late breaking conversation early this evening, is, is a little bit of research. So what the applicant's describing is, this is a legal nonconforming use. And so that, the initial position was that's, the legal nonconforming use is medical office, something like.
Yeah, yeah, I think we would say it fits under medical and dental clinics is the the table of uses.
So it may be, it may be that that's too narrow, that legal nonconforming uses don't need to be limited, you know, to that narrowly in scope. So we could certainly do the legal research on, on what we're allowed, how, how far you can expand the definition of, of a legal nonconforming use. So from my perspective, I'm happy to do that research and see if, if it, if it can be more broadly defined than that. Kim might have some more ideas, but that was kind of the one we talked about earlier this evening.
I'm just going to make a suggestion because we're just floating and of interest.
I should have said that, and so table this.
So, well, do we want a table or just deny?
I, I don't think we're going to be looking for, we're not going, we're, we're trying to find a way to make it work. And so I mean, in my, in my opinion, it doesn't matter if we get that, if we get it rezoned, or I mean, get the general plan amendment, just because we're trying to find a make it way to. And if I can meet with staff and just show them some of these historic uses that have been there, and we can call it professional office, I'm okay with that. It's, it, we're not looking to do something different.
We don't know that right now.
Yeah.
I prefer, yeah, if you just table it or something.
The problem with the denial is that then you can't reapply for a year. So you want, you'll want to make sure you have something else.
Yeah, table it, table it until we can talk with the attorney about how to do it. It's, we really are trying to reach out and talk with the, the residents and make sure it makes sense, so.
Go ahead and sit down. I'm, I don't see, I was going to take public comment, but we can, we can take that, I think. Okay.
I live right next door, and
State, state your name.
Oh, that's right, Melanie Whitehead. And they have tried to come by my house a couple of times, and I really appreciate that. And we have been pleased with having the dentist as our neighbors. And I have talked to my neighbor across the street, and then the one on the other side of the dentist office. And they were here all last time, but life is just so busy. And I keep thinking, and they keep thinking that we're going to research this because I think the way that it's been portrayed of how it's zoned already is larger than what we thought it was anyways. And so my question is, is how do I research this so I know what's going on? The, the general consensus that I've heard from my neighbors is that we're just all so hesitant to even open the door at all anymore because it might already be used for things that we don't want it to be used for. And and so we wouldn't want that to be opened up in lieu of, yes, we'll, we'll accept that, but what else does that invite in? So how do I research this?
You can look at the table of uses for the neighborhood commercial district.
I go to the computer and go to table of uses?
Yeah, it's actually, if you go to the development code, if you go to the planning department on the website.
Then the commercial, industrial and business park zones, and there's a table that shows.
Better yet, you just send Kim Struthers an email that says.
I like that one better because it was all sounding Greek too.
Then you don't have to interpret anything.
Kim's, oh, thank you. Okay, and I was confused too, because I thought I was going to come back and see all of the same people that heard all of the comments from before.
Oh, that's the Planning Commission.
Okay, so this is happening in two different meetings? And?
The Planning Commission
Yes.
participates in the plans of the city. They're not elected, we're their elected body.
So they provide a recommendation to the city council as to what we should do?
This is the second process.
Correct. And their recommendation that the Planning Commission was a recommendation to deny.
Deny.
Okay. So it was denied, and so then?
Well, it wasn't denied. They moved it to the city council with a recommendation for us to deny.
Okay.
Their recommending body.
I can, I can share this with my neighbors and hopefully help everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I would like to take a motion on this. Item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table ordinance 51-2018 to allow the applicant to work with staff to see if there's a, an agreement that can be made.
Okay. I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris, a second by Mike. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none. It is an ordinance, so we will do this by roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay, that is tabled. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, and that's consideration of Resolution 201831. It's a resolution of intent to annex the Peterson Annexation located at 1370 South Evan Street, and it's Scott Carlson. You gotta get up, Scott.
I like the, I like the purple tie.
How about that? He has an orange one too.
I know.
Many, many. For the record, I'm Scott Carlson, and I'm here on behalf of the Peterson Annexation.
I saw you out in the hallway, by the way, and when the residents were talking about the school population, I just about suggested that we call you up, but.
We, we keep building more, so.
Yeah.
And, and then they move in and we deal with it again, so. Hopefully this one will, will be much simpler than those that you've heard already tonight. The property owners have two existing parcels in the county. They've requested that they be annexed in as is into Lehigh, these front on Evan Street. It's a road that's mostly constructed. It was the half plus ten construction, and so with this annexation and, and the development, they would build the rest of that road and, and serve their two lots.
Okay, any questions for Scott while he's up here? Okay, Scott, you can sit down for a minute. So this is, this is just the resolution for the intent to annex, annex, sorry. So I will, I will entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-31, a resolution of intent to annex the Peterson Annexation located at 1370 South Evan Street, subject to any of the DRC comments and planning staff comments.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Johnny, a second by Paige.
Kim's got a comment.
Just one quick. It was brought to our attention that in the resolution, there's some language that talks about that we're not annexing the entire island, but only a portion of it. And in this case, we are. You, that's usually the case, but in this case, we're annexing an entire island. we're annexing an entire island. So if you'll just grant us a little bit of liberty on the resolution wording, that we can fix that and just take that.
Would you like to modify the motion?
Yep, just as he said it.
Second stands. Any other comments or questions on this motion? Okay, let's see, resolution 201831. Paige?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Okay, that was the easiest one of the night. You're welcome to stay.
You're a really good sport.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, and this is consideration of extent, of an extension of Madison Meadows subdivision plat eight, plats A and B. These are located at 7, 700 South, 300 East, and it's in R122. Robert String is the applicant. Is Robert here?
Can you not decide?
Someone, gentlemen, just decide who's getting up. Okay, there you go. Tell us about your project.
Well, we've been working on this and with a few problems. We've worked, been working on resolving. It's taken considerable time, and so we're asking for extension under the same plan that was approved originally.
This has been around for a while.
It has. We've had some easement issues.
Before I had white hair, I hope to get, I hope to get it approved before I start to push up daisies.
Or lose all the white hair.
Or before you end up like this.
How long of an extension are you hoping for?
Well, we've requested a year.
From which date? What date?
Actually, we have two phases in there, so I guess the later.
We were thinking that the extension would begin from tonight. Is that in that time or do we go from?
Probably be from where the, when it was expired.
So one of them, and they, they did file back in March, and we, we had some conversations that we were working on with utilities and other things. So one of them expired in March, the other one expired in May, but they did file, the, the application came in in a timely manner. So I would, I think the way the ordinance is written, you just extended a year from the original approval date, and I would just say that would apply to each one.
Okay, so one in, one would go until March of 2019, the other one until May of 2019?
Yeah.
We'll just, in the motion, maybe state that it'd be a year from the.
The date of the original.
Original date.
Yeah.
Okay, then we have, I guess there was a question on the lock count that we don't have any question about. We don't have that anymore.
Right, right now, we're just after the extension. And I'll be glad to take a motion on that if someone.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve an extension of the Madison Meadows subdivision plat A and B, a year out from the original application dates, which would be March and May of 2019, at 700 South and 300 West East in an R120, R122 zone.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Chris and a second by Paul. Any questions on that extension? Although I don't know what your questions. This is, let's see. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you got your extension.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
So as long as you have hair, I don't mind it being white, right? I just, don't complain about that. Okay, item number 10 is Dairy View Plat H amended plat located at 1058 North, 1710 East. This is, we had a tabled consideration for Dairy View Plat H amendment, amended, and then the consideration of the Dairy View Plat H amended plat, right, located. This is because of the plat name change, right?
Yeah, yeah, we already had a plat G, so we changed that one to H, and then there's now two.
H and I.
Yep, there's a second request.
Gordon, you want to come up here and just, you're probably good to describe it to us?
Okay, so, thank you. The, the first one is, was tabled from last time about the issue of the extension of, of electrical conduit. And so I assume the staff has done more research with that and has a recommendation for council at this point. I would, I would also add, you know, I talked about the concern of apparent lack of, of standard that, that mandates that requirement. I would add to that, you know, state law requires that exactions be roughly proportionate to the impact. And in this case, you know, we're adding connection to the system, and the testimony from the power director last time said that the purpose of this exaction was to provide redundancy for many, many other homes. I don't remember the number that was used. And so that doesn't seem roughly proportional to me. So I just add that. Do we want to talk about these individually, or do you want me to talk about the next one?
Actually, why don't you go ahead and, and talk about item 11 too while you're up, and then we'll bring it to the council.
Yeah, so initially considered breaking off this one lot, but things are happening fast, and so we just decided to divide the rest of it up, and that's what it is.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay, you can go ahead and sit down, or we'll.
Thank you.
Any pedantic comment on this? Seeing none. First item is to untable the, the consideration of Dairy View Plat H.
So moved, if you're ready for a motion.
Okay, I am.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then item, item B. Any comments on that?
I do have a couple of questions for Joel, if it's okay. Joel, first of all, so help me just understand the history, seven, eight, 10 years ago, when this was first put in, it was not standard practice for the city to create a redundancy of this nature. Is that correct or not correct?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that necessarily.
Now, the other question is, is that in this specific subdivision, when, when you do a redundancy point, is it, it's not on every lot. It's, you pick a lot where the redundancy, where everything kind of comes together, and then you, you build off of that so that other subdivisions you can move power over? Okay.
Yeah.
So my last question, I guess, is, is that up until this point, up till this very request to have that removed, this has been to Lehigh City very common practice, correct? Common business practice?
Yes.
And we've had no other entity come and tell you that this is unfair fee, that this is unfair practice. It's something that they've commonly have just seen as good business practice.
Not every case, no. There's been others that have disagreed with.
That have not brought it to this level?
No.
And have, have had it waived?
Right.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
I think, Ryan, you were going to do a little research on it from last time.
So in Ludma, 10, 10 dash 9A, 5091E, here's the, here's the statute. A municipality may not impose on an applicant who has submitted a complete application for subdivision approval or requirement that is not expressed in either this chapter, so in Ludma. Number two, a municipal ordinance, or number three, a municipal specification for public improvements applicable to a subdivision. That's kind of what we would call design standards in our, in our lingo. And so we, you know, we gave the power department these couple of weeks to go and look and see what they had. They do have something, you know, but we didn't feel like it was probably the level of specificity that, that would be defensible. Not that it's an automatic loser, but that it would probably be a difficult uphill battle.
Because the question really was, if it was not written down.
Right.
Did it, but it was a standard practice irrespective of whether it was written down, did it qualify as a?
Yeah, I mean, it uses, the statute uses the word expressed, but I don't know how you express something in an ordinance or design standard unless it's in writing.
Yeah.
And I confirmed that with outside counsel, so.
So, Ryan, just along that line, so when it's written down as part of a DRC review, that doesn't count? It has to be upfront, prior to DRC review?
Yeah, and, and Chris and I talked earlier, some, part of the philosophy of, this is fairly recent. I don't remember when this was added to Ludma, but the, what we lovingly referred to as the PRC, the Property Rights Coalition, basically came forth with concerns that, hey, look, when we're, when we're looking at whether a project pencils out, we'll do what you ask us to do, but we want to be able to calculate, we want to be able to capture all those costs before we move through the approval process. And so they, they, they were the spearhead for this legislation so that, yeah, whatever you want us to do, we'll, we'll do, again, within the, within the limits of the law. Just put it in writing so that we can go find it in your code, so that we don't get halfway through the approval process, and then we get all of these unexpected charges that then affect the financing of the project. So that's how this section came about. Again, I think it's in the last probably three or four years. I don't remember exactly when it was put into the code, so.
You can go ahead and sit down.
Okay.
If there's no other questions. I will take a motion on item B.
So I guess if you agree, you can approve it with just removing that DRC comment.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Dairy View Plat H, the amended plat located at 1058 North, 1710 East, with removal of the DRC comment in regards to the redundancy requirement.
Okay, do I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion by Paul and a second by Mike. Are there any questions on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That passes. Item number, let's see, 11. This is on, on plat I. We've already heard the presentation on that. Do I, do I have any questions on that? Hearing none, I will take a motion on plat I.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Dairy View Plat I amended plat located at 1058 North, 1710 East, approving with the planning DSA, DRC redline and general comments prior to pre-construction meeting and prior to recording of plat.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Motion by Mike, second by Chris. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number 12, and this is consideration of final subdivision approval of River Park Plat B, and this is six lot, residential development located approximately 2,800 West and 1,300 North in an R122 zone. This is, the applicant was the Harker Family Limited Partnership. Is there a representative here? Okay, does council wish to go ahead and move forward on this one?
I think so. It's a final.
Final?
Yep.
I just had to ask.
Yep.
Okay. I will, I will, are there any questions for staff or anything? I will take a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we grant final approval for the River Park Plat B, a six lot residential development located at approximately 2,800 West, 1,300 North in an R122 zone, subject to the completion of the DRC redline comments and prior to the pre-construction meeting comments, prior to the recordation of the plat comments and the DRC general comments.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Johnny, second by Mike. Any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number 13 is consideration of final subdivision approval of Sunset Fields is the 15 lot subdivision located 7th South and Center Street. The petitioner on this is Scott Weber. Scott here. Oh. Man, I probably mispronounced that one really bad, too.
No, he's my partner.
Oh, okay.
It's under Altavista Homes as the developer.
Okay. Let's see, we've had you up here before on this same project, so.
Yeah, my name's Jen, Jennifer Gordon.
Right, okay, there you go. Do we have any questions for her? Okay, well, this is going to be easy. This is also for final subdivision.
That works.
I will take a message on, our message, I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the final subdivision of Sunset Fields, a 15 lot subdivision located at 700 South Center Street, that all DRC redline comments prior to pre-construction meeting comments, prior to recording of plat and DRC general comments be included.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris, a second by Mike. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, next item is application from Edge Homes. It's consideration of final subdivision approval of the Exchange Public Park, a one lot subdivision located at 3,600 West Hardman Way in a PR, in, in an R3 PUD. Okay, is there a representative here from Edge Homes? Okay, one up.
Hi, I'm Jaren Nichols with Edge Homes. And this is kind of interesting. You do a site plan approval, and that just goes to planning commission. This is the plat, and that just goes to city council, so you guys aren't really seeing what's underneath the plat. But I'd be happy to kind of explain that and give you background on that. I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Okay, do we have any questions for the, or from the applicant, for the applicant? Might be easy.
Okay.
Okay, I will, I will go ahead and take a motion on, on this item if somebody'd like to give that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the final subdivision approval of the Exchange Public Park, a one lot subdivision located at approximately 3,600 West Hardman Way in an R3 PUD. And we approve with planning and DRC redline and general comments and prior to recording of plat.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion by Mike, a second by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, stay up there. The next one is final subdivision for the Exchange Phase 12. This is a 23 lot townhouse, town home project. Okay. Any questions on this item? It's also for final. Okay, I'll take a motion on this.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the final subdivision approval of the Exchange Phase 12, a 23 lot townhome project located at approximately 3,870 West Hardman Way in an existing R3 PU, PUD zone. And we approve with the planning, DRC redline and general comments, and prior to recording of plat and prior to pre-construction meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, make, motion by Mike and a second by Paige. Are there any questions? I do have a question. So on the motion. I, I've been out there and saw your project. I like it. There's, there's a DRC comment about variety in the, in the surface textures, the colors, maybe some of the styles. Is there any intent to, to increase some variety or do something in your plans on your townhouses out there?
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about that with Kim. We were so far in, coming up on the last couple phases, where we were, and we'll be on planning commission Thursday for kind of a, kind of an expansion of the exchange, where we're going to bring in a different product type of townhome. And I kind of feel like if we change it too much, it kind of looks like we, we didn't intend. It's, right now, it's kind of a continuous feel, where if towards the end, we kind of just change it up, it may not look like we intend to do. In my, in my opinion, that's kind of what we, we thought. It looks continuous, it looks unified to this point. And then we can transition into the other ones and kind of create a clear theme transition into a different product. That's kind of our intention, but we're definitely open to if, if that's something that is way out left field to you guys, and that you don't agree with my, my thoughts on that, then, you know, we're open to suggestions on that.
I'd say continue to work with Kim. I just, I've been through a lot of these, and I know if, if the variety and the styles really adds long-term value to the product. So it's one of those things nobody notices now, but in 15 years, they do notice. So helps preserve that.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, so the next item is also, that's, that's homes as well, consider. Oh, wait a minute. Are we on 16?
16.
Okay, yeah, one more. I thought you were telling me I was one ahead.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Okay, consideration of final subdivision approval, the Exchange Phase 12, and, well, BB and 12 EE condo plants. Okay, this is in a R3 PUD zone. This is, once again, this is final subdivision. Do we have any questions on that? Seeing none, I will take a motion on item number 16.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the final subdivision approval of the Exchange Phase 12 BB dash 12 EE condo plats, 10 unit condo plats, each located at approximately 3,870 West Hardman Way in an R3 PUD zone. And we approve those with the planning, DRC redline, general comments, and prior to recording of plat.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Mike and a second by Paul. Any question? Okay, now, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, that's good. Okay, I, next item is item number. Okay, I, next item is item number seventeen, and this is approval of preliminary subdivision of her Cold Springs Ranch, H D one, and this is located at thirty-six hundred west, seven hundred north. This is a D R Horton subdivision, do they have a representative here? Come up here and give us your name. Tell us a little bit about your product.
Sure, good evening, Adam Loser with D R Horton. This would be our fourth subdivision plat that we brought before the council. The other three were in the checkoff stage, I think we've got our pre-con scheduled for next week for our backbone plat, which is that main artery thirty-six hundred west and Cold Spring Drive that connects out to Redwood. So we're excited, this is our, uh, first phase of townhomes on the north which borders our, our neighbor there, uh, Scott McLaughlin, on the north end of our Cold Spring Development.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to comment on this project, it is preliminary? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Uh, if there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we grant preliminary subdivision approval for Cold Springs Ranch H D one, uh, one hundred and fifty unit residential development at thirty-six hundred west, seven hundred north, in a planned community zone, subject to the, uh, D R C redline and D R C general comments.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Um, I'll second, but then I have a question on the motion.
Oh, okay.
Is that backwards?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, we have a motion by Johnny, a second by Chris, and that question.
Um, do you want to include the planning commission motion and comments as well?
Sure. Is there anything specific in there that you want to point out?
No, it's just that they, they, it went before then, there's a motion for, they, they approved, and so I just, we typically have put that in in the past, so I just wondered.
Sure.
Okay.
I made my motion to, uh, include the planning commission comments.
And the second stands?
Second stands.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Easy. Item eighteen is consideration of ordinance fifty-three twenty eighteen. This is updating the Lehigh City Design Standards and Public Improvement Spec, specification manual. Lauren, is this yours?
I think Ross did it, I can't.
Where's Ross? She's not even here, we can't pass it without him here.
That's okay. Uh, there were just four changes, and I think you got those tonight, I think, is that not correct?
Sat in there.
Yeah, we have them.
Okay.
With those, there were a few items as we went through it that we didn't think were really, uh, ready for, and a few that we wanted to add, a few items. So there was a little more latitude in proving things, sometimes when you put it in and there's no latitude, you can't even make a change, so some of those were to add, you know, latitude for staff. The other one had to do with drainage, and I don't think we're prepared, we're ready, uh, we have to do some things in drainage, but I think this was carrying it too far too soon on the sumps, so we just pulled that one.
Okay. Any questions for Lauren on this?
I, I noticed one of them, I noticed one of them in, in regards to park strip, which on our, uh, two, on our little field trip, we saw some exposure to that, this is suggesting a five foot instead of a four foot park, park strip, is that adequate for what we need from a tree perspective?
Um, well, I think this is just bringing it up to what we're currently requiring is, which is a five foot, but I think my comment on the D R C was that we should go even larger than that, or consider other park strip options.
That's gonna be a pretty lengthy discussion to work out the math on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this is a, this is a good starting point?
Yeah.
At some point, as part of that, would there also be the potential of suggestion of trees that would be appropriate for that type of park strip?
That, that match the width of the park strip.
So that it doesn't cause the issue that we're dealing with?
Yep.
I did talk to Trent, uh, and, you know, the flowering pears, which has been the standard, when we did that, that was the state that even, you know, proposed those. They were fairly new, and so we, we've learned a lot since then. They, they're not sturdy, they don't, the branches aren't as strong, that's really, these type of trees next to a road are not good, because they do cause problems, you know, if they fall, we've had damage out west, something falls, then you can have a serious accident. And so, uh, he is looking at different trees, obviously, or even brush, even bushes maybe more than even trees.
Yep.
So, uh, the trees just have other issues, a lot of, if you think about a tree in winter, it's really terrible. Uh, if it has any, um, meat to it at all, quote unquote, that's an icing issue that is huge uh, for our streets department, and so I, there's things they're looking at.
Okay. Thanks.
It's gonna take some time. Okay, uh, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, ordinance fifty-three dash twenty eighteen, updating the Lehigh City's Design Standards and Public Improvements Specif, specification manual.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Paul and a second by Johnny, are there any questions? Or additions? Okay. Uh, this is an ordinance, so it's by roll call. Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Paige?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Uh, let me, I just gotta ask a question, Johnny, you're wearing a jacket, I'm wearing a jacket, does this seem like really hot in here?
It seems, it does seem hot.
Can somebody check the air conditioner and see what?
Paige, Paige needs your jacket. Paige, do you need my jacket? Paige will happily take it off your hands.
Seventy-one?
It's these heat lamps.
Sorry, Paige. I'll let you, I'll let you have my jacket.
That's funny.
I just, it's, it's just seems warm to me. Okay, item nineteen, which is ordinance, uh, fifty twenty eighteen, amending the Lehigh Municipal Code, chapter nine dash two C, and this is secondary water system conservation. Cameron?
So, uh, Gary and Matt from the Water Department are also here, if you have any questions about our current state of, of the water. Um, but last time we talked to you, we talked about, um, changing the way that we respond to, um, water restrictions, and, uh, the challenge that we had was that it's by ordinance, the, the restrictions that are in place, and so what we've done is we've taken our current water shortage management plan, um, it's been in place for a few years, and we felt like it was time to update it, we've learned a few things about that. Um, so what changes is in phase two, the moderate water shortage phase, um, we're changing that, previously it was you could water three times a week on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, depending on your address. Um, we're changing that to say no consecutive days. So it still pencils out to be about three days a week, but we're not saying you have to water Monday, Wednesday, Friday if you live at this address. Um, we're saying you can't water on a Tuesday if you water on a Monday. You have to have at least a day in between those.
So two, two things, just real quick, one is, most sprinkler systems, and including ours, that in some ways makes it easier, because it's the every other day is a, is an option. Uh, the other is, is there concern with not designating which day they can water on from a, you know, water storage pressure or anything like that, where, you know, maybe just coincidentally eighty percent of the residents say, you know what, I really, you know, kind of picked a certain stage of days.
Uh, Mayor Council, for the record, it's Gary Thomas, the Assistant Water Director. Uh, as far as that goes, no, yeah, your system, it, it kind of maintains that pressure throughout the day, so, no, it, it's not gonna change.
We don't have more water in the system any one day than the next, right?
No, we try to budget it out, so it, you know, it equals out throughout the day.
Hey, Gary, um, so, last couple weeks, I've had to redo some sprinklers in the backyard and move lines and things like that. Um, in the process of doing that, I purchased a smart watering system, it's called the Orbitz Beehive. What I thought was interesting is, is that I actually turned on the smart watering, so I go through every zone, I tell it the soil type, I tell it the how much sun it gets, I, there's like seven, eight, nine different characteristics I tell it. Um, and the idea is, right, is that the system uses a calculation to determine when and how often the water lawn. So, which is something I think we want to encourage people to do more of, right?
Absolutely.
The thing that I think is interesting, and I agree with no consistent days to an extent, but on here, what it does is it will water a zone each day, but for a far less period of time because of my soil type, because of the clay. And so I guess, I guess my question is, is are we, for me, I, I don't know, I guess I'm just sitting here thinking, would you as a water guy rather me let the system control based on what, everything I put into it?
And as future goes, that's, that's what we need to look at.
Right.
You know, we need to promote that more.
But under this new rule, which I can understand, if I left my smart watering system on the way it is, I could be in violation if we're in yellow.
It's, it's the policing end of it, you know, it's how, how do we police it?
Right.
You know, there is people that they want to use that, and, you know, they will use that, and, you know, if we don't catch.
I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is that would you prefer me?
I really would, yeah.
To shut it off and just go to every other day?
No, I.
I, I would, I would assume in a situation like that, if a neighbor reported you, and somebody went out from an enforcement perspective to levy a fine on you, and you said, hey, I've got the smart watering system, that they'd say, hey.
That's what we're trying to promote.
Keep, keep, keep going to what you're doing.
And I think that's great, I just, it's not.
You'd be out of compliance, but, and they're technically.
Out of curiosity, how long does it tell you to water?
Um, it, it's interesting, it, it will do, uh, the zones that I have just, uh, spray nozzles on, it will do that in like five to seven increments about, um, and then on the rotors.
In five, five to seven minutes?
Yeah, and then it will shut off, and then it will wait so many hours, and then maybe do it again, or wait till the next night to do it again. But it, because of that clay type, but on the rotors, it can go, it will do it maybe three different times during an evening for a total of an hour and twelve minutes. But it, it only does it at, you know, twenty-five minute, thirty-two minute increments, so that the water isn't running off the clay and running off the thing, so. And then, like, I program it, I, it's kind of fun, because I can go and turn it on right now, so if my kids are in the backyard, I could totally just spray them and not even. But I, it's, oh, it's really fun, I, I've been playing with it a lot, but, um, but yeah, I mean, if you look at my calendar, you'll see a water drop every day, but it's a different schedule based on the weather, based on this and that. And, and I, I understand I wouldn't be in violation, but.
That's, that's our start, that's where we want to start, you know, with most people, but I'm, I'm with you, I've got the smart clock, they do offer rebates.
Yeah.
You know, so it, it is the way of the future, you know, it's just getting everybody on board.
Yep, okay.
Maybe, maybe what we need to look into also is having some sort of caveat in this that says, you know, in phase two, water no consecutive days, or um, use a smart watering system.
And, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with going with this this year and see how it does, and then just adding.
Right now, we're not, we're not in stage two, so, you know, we're still promoting.
As soon as we are, though, I'm gonna drive by your house and report you, though.
Hey, well, I wanted to know. You'll be the first one to be reporting.
Pre-reporting.
It's gonna be a thousand dollar fine, another five hundred dollar fine.
Awesome.
So, um, essentially, as far as this plan goes, um, phase three is watering, um, two days a week, at least two days in between water cycles, similar to what phase three was before, so really, the big change is, is that we're not saying which days you should be watering on, so.
I like that.
So Gary, how close are we to going to another phase?
Um, I, this year I don't think we will, we're still, we're still waiting for some hard numbers, but we're teetering between seventy and seventy-five, so. I, I think we're gonna make it this year, you know, we have some internal problems that we're trying to work through, but as far as storage.
Seventy to seventy-five refers to what, sorry?
Percent capacity. On our storage, out of Deer Creek, our storage water, so that would kind of mandate what's coming up there.
So, a question, so Dave Norman and his admin report, just along with you, Mike, um, he put in something about our Provo water use, and I thought he said Deer Creek, but that we had hit, it seemed like to me he said we hit our max. Or like, the, the allotment that we're given, we've hit that, and now we're into, does that sound right, or am I making sense there?
Well, there was something in that that he said.
Yeah, that, it seemed like we had hit our
Yep.
limit, allotment.
And that was.
I could try to pull that up, I think it was this, this last week.
Well, he's pulling that up, I'm, I can't wait to order my smart system, because I want to do that, but I, I did plant that, uh, that highly resistant low water grass. It's about the same color as that green lake over there. That's what color it comes in, so it looks really weird in the rest of the lawn.
So this is.
I wouldn't suggest that for anybody, it's just that.
Uh, this is what Dave put in the, in the report, he said, with the extreme heat, we're seeing high usage throughout our pressure irrigation system, we're already using water from the Provo River Aqueduct, and our usual summer water that we get out of the Bull River from Dry Creek is nearly gone.
Yeah, so, we are pulling, if that's what you're, we are pulling some of the storage a little early, because of the North Bench. North Bench, like, uh, this week, we're, we're only getting about four C F S, four second feet.
Yep.
Last year at this time was getting eight, so we're about half as much. Eighteen. Oh, eighteen, oh, it was that much. So, yeah, the, oh, quite a bit, but last year was extreme. As far as what was getting out of there, we.
So, last year, would it be fair to say we weren't using any water from the Provo River Aqueduct?
Yeah, we wasn't pulling, we wasn't pulling any.
We used, we used, uh, Matt Dawson with Water Department, we were, we were pulling Provo River water early all year long last year.
Because of the.
But it was free.
Yeah.
We were an extra allotment until July seventh last year, so all that water we pulled out of Provo River was all extra allotment, it was free. Just carriage cost was all we had to pay.
But normally, we wouldn't have pulled into it as quick, as soon.
No.
But because it was so overwhelming, okay.
North Bench usually carries, it's till first of July, sometimes it's not.
And, and I apologize to you guys, the report I sent out this morning, we are seeing some conservation efforts, um, I think I said last week we used six hundred and eighty-two something, something like that acre feet of water, and this week last year, we used like seven hundred and something, so we're, we're about fifty acre feet less for the same week as last year, so we are seeing some conservation efforts, but.
That's on, that's on you guys' part.
Yep.
Administration getting it out there, so good job.
Any questions about this that we can answer?
Is this going out to all the residents?
That's what I'd like to do, um, if you approve this tonight, we'll print this out on, uh, more, uh, lower quality paper that you hold in the mail, right? And, uh, send that out to every resident.
Did we want to add a little, a little mark or something about using a smart clock, or maybe not this time, or?
I think it's a great idea.
We may want to point out right in the front that it's changed, that the regulations have changed, so they need, do need to pay attention to it this year, it's, it's different.
Yeah, I think if you want to, this kind of mirrors what the ordinance is, and so, Ryan, I don't know if they, they choose to, if you choose to add, maybe that you want to add to the ordinance, that you put something back, some smart water in that phase two or smart watering system.
We can add that in here for sure.
Okay.
Depends on whether you want it to be required, or, I mean, I think you can put anything you want to encourage.
Yeah.
Yeah, encourage.
I'd say let's see what happens.
I think maybe you put, you know, you've got right here, exceptions are made for new lawns, exceptions are, maybe you just put exceptions may be made for residents that have smart clocks.
But if they're gonna use it, if they have a smart clock, they have to utilize it.
Absolutely.
Just set it.
Yeah, and so maybe that is the function. Yeah, maybe a exception will be made for a resident, you know, using a smart clock the way it should be used or something.
Yeah.
And they are still offering rebates, so you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to get mine ordered, I just never have the time to sit down and do it anymore, so.
Question, just one more question, it says in here that we'll be informed of which phase, how are we informing the people?
And so, um, what we'll do is, if we decide to go to a phase two, um, per Ryan's recommendations, we'll have a formal memo that comes from Dave Norman to the administration and the mayor, saying that he wants to go into phase two, and then we'll use social media, uh, we'll use our, all of our media outlets to, to let people know that that's the case, uh, if necessary, we can do direct mailings, um, but I think we can probably work with the newspapers while we try and get that information out.
Okay.
Like a big green, yellow, red spotlight in town that just.
Like the Batman?
Shines on everybody's windows.
There's one right by my house.
It's right next to you.
We do, I, I did also draft a letter, um, with the mayor that we're going to reach out to commercial properties, schools, that, that educate them about this as well, so.
By the way, Matt, I voted against that sign, so you just, you know.
You know what, I never made a single complaint about it until it got, the sign come up, and I walked out one night, and I'm standing in between the sign and my house, and my shadow on my house is like this. Blurring through my windows, I told Craig Bird I thought I was living on the Las Vegas Strip.
See, that way you save on your power bill, although you don't have to turn any lights on.
Nightlight.
Look at its color.
So, you're just talking about the McDonald's sign light, right? It's the one you're.
No. The one by Vat's Ballpark.
I know.
Okay.
Okay, let's, I'll take a motion on item number nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance fifty dash two thousand eighteen.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Chris and second by Paige, this is an ordinance, I think, Johnny, you're first on this?
Yes.
Uh, Paul?
Just real quick, it.
Sorry, I didn't ask for questions on the motion, I might be getting one here, so.
Well, it's, Chris said fifty dash two thousand nineteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
All right, I'm with you.
No questions, okay, yes? Paul? Mike?
Yes. Paige?
It's a long night.
Chris?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I guess it is still twenty eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, next one is consideration of resolution twenty eighteen.
Play the fifth.
Dash twenty-nine. Uh, thought I was being interrupted over there. I don't know. Oh, okay. Uh, this approving the fifth, fifth amendment to the inter, intermountain power agency organization agreement. So, uh, yeah, the fifth amendment.
I wondered about that.
Is that a singing group or something?
Constitutional committee, constitutional convention here.
For, okay. Joel, you're up.
So I don't know what, what questions you might have. Dan Eldridge from IPA is here with us as well. If you have anything that you'd like to ask him, the fifth amendment, I was just talking with Dan and the original, uh, agreement was from nineteen seventy-seven, so they're revising it quite a bit, quite a bit. A lot of it has to do, in my opinion, with the result of the repowering. So a lot of the stuff they need to update for that and move forward. Um, but yeah. And then I don't know, comments on twenty-one. Um, that's the repowering, the IPA, the IPP power plant from eighteen hundred megawatts down to eight hundred and forty megawatts. That affects Lehigh, um, in a way that, um, instead of eight hundred, instead of seven point seven megawatts of entitlement, we will decrease to three point six megawatts of entitlement.
And when does that take?
Um, what's the date for the completion on that, Dan?
It's July first of twenty twenty-five.
So twenty twenty-five? Does that mean they're just cutting the plant in half? They're part of it. This is, this is Delta?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you were just there.
Yeah.
You might have another place to stay next time you go in there. Any, any, yeah, any other questions? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-nine.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Motion by Chris, second by Johnny. Any questions? Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. Item number twenty-one, which is consideration of resolution twenty eighteen thirty, approving the alternate repowering petitioner.
Repowering.
I'm sorry, my, I, I am not focusing well tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if you take a motion?
Yeah, yeah, if you have no questions on it. Okay, I'll take a motion.
To approve resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Chris, second by Mike. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
I need to get my glasses cleaned. I'm having a hard time seeing the periods here. Uh, okay, item number twenty-two is, uh, the purchase of two properties for power easements. Uh, this is in two items, A and B, uh, two different resolutions, twenty eighteen thirty-two and twenty eighteen thirty-three. We'll just go ahead and let Marlon just give it to us straight.
I'll read it. Any questions? So what this is, is, um, uh, basically, uh, we've entered into an agreement. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to finalize the, uh, power. These are for power, power purchase easements. We're actually purchasing the property of Craig Johnson. Uh, one is a one acre lot that we're purchasing. Uh, the other one is next to the lot, it actually is a one acre lot that has a home on it. Um, basically what it boils down to is we need, Joel needs the power easement to go through and it was determined that there might be some future opportunity for both the property sites. Um, and instead of going through eminent domain and everything else, uh, Craig Johnson just said, hey, why don't you just purchase the property? And from the city's perspective, we felt that would be appropriate. So everything's been completed on it, uh, with approval of this tonight. Uh, we'll be able to finalize the sale on this and we have all the documents and everything else ready to go forward on that.
Okay, any questions? I'll take a motion on twenty eighteen thirty-two.
To approve resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-two.
Okay, have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris, second by Mike. Any questions? Okay, Paige?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
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 Okay, Steve, Scott.
Whoever.
Okay, item, uh, twenty eighteen thirty, thirty-three.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirty-three as presented.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Johnny, a second by Paul. Uh, we'll start with Chris.
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
I'm going to do it to you twice.
Quick question on that. Is that a real name after Craig Johnson and?
Yeah, I wondered that.
Yes, it is. That's his wife. Um, the reason that she's not listed on the first is that she is actually listed on the home property. The first property is the one acre lot that's just owned by Craig Johnson.
Do you know how to pronounce it?
Yeah.
I'd be, you know, just to know how to pronounce it.
Craig, how do you say your wife's name?
Washu.
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 I, I had to go into the document to make sure it wasn't just like some weird misspelling that Marilyn did. It was late, late on the agenda. Marilyn was just typing crazy.
I have to confess, Washu was not what I was getting.
I think Marilyn double checked it two or three times herself, so.
No, it's just interesting. Thanks.
Okay.
Wow.
Let's see, the next item is item number twenty-three. This is, uh, uh, resolution twenty eighteen twenty-eight and this is, uh, authorizing eminent domain proceedings. Lauren?
Yeah, this is on twelve hundred West. We have one, one property that we, we still trying to work out the issues with, but we're moving ahead on the design, the design's done, we're ready to, we're actually in the bidding process. So we talked about you this before, we needed to, you know, we may not use this, but we need this authorization. So if we have to go to condemnation, we can.
Does it look any better than it? He's actually at scout camp or something, isn't he?
Uh, yeah, my name's Jason Crandall. I'm an attorney for Jim Loveland and Viti Vichi, the owner of the property. And, uh, I'm kind of a little bit late to the game here, but, uh, I have had a chance to review the, uh, the appraisal and, uh, I have spoken actually to Tim Bywater, uh, counsel for the city on this. Uh, we do take issue with the appraisal. We don't expect to, uh, challenge the taking at all. And so, uh, once Jim returns from, from being out of town, we'll, we'll get to work on that, uh, occupancy agreement to move forward. But we do expect to, to, uh, take some issue with the appraisal. I explained that to Mr. Bywater.
Okay, where, where is the parcel on twelfth West?
This is, uh, just, uh.
South of the Aces.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's one of the southernmost pieces.
Yes. Northern.
Northern, yeah.
By your old house.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this just allows you to move forward. This, this isn't the, the complaint isn't filed today. It doesn't start the, the actual eminent domain proceeding. Um, Tim, who he mentioned recommends moving forward with the intent because, especially where our next meeting isn't for another month. Um, just because it can, it can take sixty-nine days to get an order for immediate occupancy if somehow the agreement falls apart. So this just ensures that things move along, but it sounds like it's going to get resolved.
We expect to have an agreement, so we're, we're fine if you.
And it's not uncommon to have the, have a quote unquote fight about the value, but at least everything else moves forward, so. Sounds like that's what will happen in this case.
There's probably over a hundred golf balls at that field. I want to take that into consideration.
We'll keep that in mind. The appraisal.
Do you go through them and see any, he wants them back?
They're yours.
All right, I, I will be happy to take a motion on item number twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by, uh, Chris, you made it.
Yep.
Second by Paul. Any questions? Okay, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Okay. Frankly, I lost track of the order a long time ago, so I'm just shooting from the hip, guys. I'm really tired tonight. I got, I got up way too early this morning, let me tell you. Okay. Uh, item number twenty-four, which is resolution twenty eighteen thirty-five and this is in regards to real estate purchase between Brian Brown and Lehigh City. Give us the whole spiel, whatever.
Back for the whole spiel.
Johnny, Johnny wasn't here, he just had the verbal conversation before.
Did you want to see the, uh, okay. So at the last council meeting, um, I believe, uh, Jason presented, uh, the concept drawings, um, talked a little bit about, uh, the property, uh, itself. Um, based on, uh, some staff recommendation this morning, we did get an addendum number two from Brian, um, that basically states that, um, and if it's, if you'll forgive me, I'm going to actually read what it states. Uh, subject to Lehigh City working with the buyer to create slash make available off-site parking, uh, for the property, buyer agrees to start demolition within ninety days of the demolition permit issuance, purchase a building permit with all fees paid within a hundred and eighty days and construction to begin within three hundred and sixty-five days of closing. In the event that the buyer has not stated, has not started construction within three hundred and sixty-five days of closing, the city may elect to take ownership back once all costs are reimbursed to the buyer. This was put in as a, basically, don't sit on the property. If you do sit on it, we have the right to take it back. It is not the intent. The intent is to move forward as fast as they can. Their other concern is, um, how long is Lehigh City going to take to work with them to get the permits and everything and, and get them to build? Um, the second piece of it was buyer agrees that the concept plan submitted will be followed. Buyer reserves the right to make minor changes with city approval while following all planning and zoning ordinances. So the other part of it was, um, we don't want to bait and switch. So this is kind of what they've, they've looked at, um, and they're going to actually present two different plans to, um, planning and zoning, and we'll work with planning and zoning on which plan they feel most confident can go forward with. So, um, basically what you have before you was just the authorization for the mayor to, uh, enter into the purchase and sale agreement. Um, once that is entered into, then we, um, the intent of, uh, Brian Brown is to move forward as fast as he can to closing. Brian is also here tonight, if you do have any questions of him.
Good luck.
Any questions?
I mean, it's not done yet, but give it about five minutes.[1733.29]